January 5th, it is 6:31. This is the Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. Councillors present are Bordelon, Bumgardner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Aubrey, Granatoski. Councillor Parker notified that she may not be able to make it this evening, and Councillor Zepari is absent. So we have a quorum with seven councillors. New business is 2020-895 Community Development Block Grant COVID Funding. And we have a motion. So would Councillor Bumgardner, would you please start us off with that motion, please? Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. And just to clarify, this, the motion would be in the Cow Special Meeting Agenda Packet?
Yes.
Is Councillor Bordelon present?
She was just here. Did she not? She was here and then I think it dropped and then she was back again. Is she gone again?
I don't see her.
I don't see her.
Is she in attendance, Mr. Bert? Because she keeps coming.
Not yet. I'll keep an eye out for her, but she's not yet.
Okay, so we are back to six councillors then. Thank you, Councillor Franco, for pointing that out. I think her service keeps dropping because she goes, she's coming in and out.
Nah, she's all flighty since she got married.
She's a happy newlywed. All right, so, oh, she's back. And here, hold on. I don't know if I can, sometimes it doesn't work when I try to move people.
I promoted her.
Now we're back to seven. I appreciate the help watching, guys, thank you. I'm sorry?
Are you able to hear my mic? I just want to check.
Yes, thank you. All right, so, Councillor Bumgardner, please, the motion?
Yes. And just again, to clarify, I have about two agenda packets. And so I just want to clarify that I am reading the correct one. So this is just the item that has CBDD COVID funding. So.
You want to read the one to recommend a resolution in the Cow Packet?
All right, got it. But not the entire with the whereas, correct?
No, just recommending the resolution now.
Excellent. All right, so I recommend a resolution to authorize the town manager to sign the contract and any other necessary forms to accept and distribute the CDBG COVID-19 funding. So moved.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Bumgardner and seconded by Heed. And we have Planning Director Reiner with us this evening. If you'd just like to briefly explain for the public what this is, Mr. Reiner, thank you.
Sure. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So what you have before you is a $150,000 grant from the state of Connecticut under our Community Development Block Grant Program. We had submitted a letter of interest or a letter of intent a few months back indicating that we could actually spend a number of dollars in Groton to stockpile PPE. So, and that we could utilize an old school building classroom for the storage of these materials. This would be items that would be available to the town, to people, to town government, to businesses, as well as the general public. And we're awarded that grant from the state. We have until December 31st of 2022 to spend this funding. We have not started spending yet. We don't have vendors lined up yet that we would purchase this funding. But the state only gave us about 30 days to move from the, except from the award letter that they sent us to get all the contracts signed. So that's why we're kind of rushing through this a little bit quicker than we normally would. Happy to answer any questions, if people have any on the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Does the council have questions for Mr. Reiner?
I'd just like to thank them for being expeditious in getting this done and helping us to get some things that may help some of our businesses. I really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Councillor Bordelon.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, in regards to the PPE, there's a lot of people that are not so fortunate and able to afford to keep up with the demand of it. Is any of this able to be used for people with financial need to be able to access some of this, the masks or whatever? If so, how does the community go about that?
We have not yet put together a program for how this would be distributed, but the intent is for this to have a stockpile of critical PPE supplies for the general public, businesses, and, you know, for the town of Groton. So that's something that is part of the intent of this, so yes.
Okay, so will it come back before the council to, you know, make the public aware of how they could go about accessing this if they had a financial need?
I think as we move forward, we can certainly bring this back to the council to let the council know the procedures. You know, we certainly have to follow all the guidelines for the state, but as part of the outreach and anything we do to make people aware of this, yes, we'll certainly let the council know. And, you know, we'd want to distribute that through every network and channel that we can.
Perfect. I think it's great and I think it's important. Sometimes information comes in and it has great intensity, but the councillors, you know, are the ones that live in the town. And so it's important when we come across people to be able to pass that information on. So I think it should, yeah, definitely come back before the council. And that way we know exactly how that information's going to be accessed, as well as how the community could get access to this or apply, or however the method's going to be. Thank you.
And we have councillors Franco and Bumgardner.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner, so as I read this, it stated that this can go back to January of 2020 for expenses. So will this cover expenses the town has incurred beginning back in 2020 as well?
No.
I think we've already received all our funding for reimbursement. I don't think we're out anything.
Okay, so we're, we're pretty much deep into a pandemic now and many businesses have already gathered their PPE supplies, you know, things that are necessary. My concern also is going to be if we stockpile and it's not actually utilized, what are we going to do then? And is there anything else this money can be utilized for other than just straight up masks and gowns and sanitizer?
So these are all great questions. So we don't plan on stockpiling and then just holding on to it. We want to be able to buy the critical mass of, of these items so that people, so that we can develop a distribution program and get them out for Groton's entire population. We also, if we don't need to spend all of the money, so we don't want to just buy too much of products and things. So some of it is, we need to, this all happened very quickly. We had to put a kind of a plan together for the state and then we didn't really hear anything back. So we didn't know if we were going to be getting the funding. And then, you know, it was right before Christmas, we learned, okay, we did get this funding. Here's all the contract paperwork. And there's actually some other things that we're trying to work out with the state on exactly how this money can be utilized. So again, it's, this is still a little bit in flux and we're still trying to learn exactly how, how this is going to be utilized. But if memory serves correct, although it does say the spending can be from January 1st, 2021, please keep in mind funds, either public or private, cannot be committed or expended until you have relieved or received a release of funds from the Department of Health, so, or the Department of Housing, I should say. So we, although have spent things, and I think, you know, Manager Bert said, I believe we've been reimbursed for everything. We can't go and spend money today because we haven't signed that we would expect to get reimbursed for because we have not yet signed this contract or received all the necessary paperwork back from the state.
So it's not retroactive, basically?
Correct.
It's not from, it's from where you sign forward?
That is my understanding.
Okay, and you're just trying to figure out what else you can spend it on? Let's just say mask, gowns and sanitizer. There's not a big call for it anymore because businesses are just taking care of themselves and they've figured out a pipeline to get these supplies easily.
This is John. Can I interject something on that, on that right there real quick?
Please.
Paige Bronk's been working on this. I've asked him to reach out to the state to see what flexibility we have. For instance, could you buy those zig glues for businesses? It's unlikely, but I've asked him to see what, you know, if there's some flexibility there.
Okay, that sounds great. That's what I'm basically trying to find out. Is, is it just PPE? Or are there other things that we can purchase with this to help businesses during, you know, the pandemic and COVID? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Councillor Bumgardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think Councillor Franco asked a few of the questions I was going to ask as well. If I'm not mistaken, this is one of the more sizable grants from this application pool to a tune of about $150,000. And as, as Manager Bert has stated, I know Mr. Bronk, who has coordinated the COVID-19 response efforts for, for the town. I know he had discussed this grant early on as well and just want to thank, you know, Paige, John, and John as well for your work on this. And, you know, I would certainly agree with, you know, both Councillor Franco and Councillor Bordelon that, you know, any way where if there is, you know, an excess of supplies, you know, in the town doesn't exhaust that supply, that, you know, in private cities, you know, citizens and residents who may not have the financial capacity right now to pay for PPE, as well as businesses, you know, any way we can provide relief there should be explored. So again, just hats off to you guys for, for your leadership on this. And, you know, it's my, my question would be, you know, this is obviously a Department of Housing grant, but do we know of any other kind of grant opportunities that are coming down the pike where Groton could also apply to, you know, for different funding streams to pay, to free the costs of, you know, to free the costs associated with our response to the COVID-19 pandemic?
This is John Reiner. There are not any funding sources that I'm aware of right now. You know, my team is always looking for more opportunities for grants. And I think that's something that we will continue to look into. And I know other departments across the town also have their eyes open for that type of stuff, too.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to, to clarify a couple of things. So it's a $150,000 grant and there's 121.5 for the project and 28.5 for administration of it. So that would go to reimburse some town staff payroll?
Yes, it certainly could. Town staff or if we end up utilizing any consultants to just help develop plans or some of the distribution plan on this, yeah.
Thank you. And then the other question was about, in, in the background, it says the storage will be in an old school building classroom, utilizing existing space within the current Parks and Rec Department offices. So that would be Fitch Middle, not Spicer House, correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, I see no other hands. So we will vote on 2028-95 CDBG COVID funding. We are at eight councillors now because Councillor Zepari joined us at 6:37. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. And that brings us to the end of our Cow Agenda. I'll take a motion to adjourn the Cow, please.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who it was.
Zep.
Zepari, thank you.
I'll second Zep.
And seconded by Bumgardner. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councillors. We are adjourned at 6:45 for the special Cow. All right, guys, so now we're going to go straight into the regular Town Council meeting. And Mr. Bert, did the clerk make it to the meeting or is she still on the road? Looks like she's still on the road.
I believe she's still on the road, yes.
All right, so we are in the Town and Groton Town Council Regular Meeting. Mr. Bert, you're going to act as the clerk, you said, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll go ahead and start. All councillors present and accounted for except for Councillor Parker, who had given prior notice that she may not be in attendance.
Thank you. And would, Mr. Bert, would you lead us in a salute to the flag this evening?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Who the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have no recognitions, awards and memorials. We do have a public hearing this evening. And the public hearing is on page three in your packet. And we will, I will yield the floor to Mr. Reiner to do a quick introduction on 2019-457 Access Property Redevelopment 517-529 Gold Star Highway. Mr. Reiner?
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So I just wanted to give a brief overview of the Gold Star Highway property that is up for public hearing tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Reiner. I'm sorry to interrupt. I forgot to have Mr. Bert read the call to public hearing, please.
Oh, okay. Maybe you're going to have me do it once you're ready to call on the people.
I was going to, but I see some, yes, if you could do that, please.
Town of Groton, Notice of Public Hearing, January 5th, 2021. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-163E, a public hearing will be held by the Groton Town Council on January 5th, 2021 at 6:30 PM for the consideration of the sale of public property, specifically 529 and 517 Gold Star Highway, during a virtual meeting publicly available live on GMTV and YouTube dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 22nd day of December, 2020. Betty McCausier, Groton Town Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Bert. All right, Mr. Reiner, I'm sorry for the interruption. I apologize. Back to you, sir.
No worries at all. Thank you. So this property is a piece of property that the town acquired through a tax foreclosure. And we had started marketing this property a number of years ago for redevelopment. And the purpose of the public hearing tonight is really not about what is being proposed on the property, but instead, do we sell this property or not sell it as a town? We have marketed the property, issued an RFP, have selected a preferred developer. That preferred developer has actually owns a couple of the adjacent parcels, so they've kind of brought a larger piece together. And, you know, again, the purpose of tonight is to really confirm that we want to sell the property as a town. The current proposal for the property is for multifamily housing development.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. So again, the, the purpose of the public hearing is because the town is going to be disposing of town property and state statute requires us to hold this hearing. It's not to discuss what will be taking place, but whether or not we are going to sell. Is that correct here?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And in my list of speakers, I have no one signed up for the public hearing. I will ask Mr. Bert if he has anybody else or anyone that signed up for the public hearing?
I do not.
Okay, very good. So I will close the public hearing at 6:50 as we did not have anyone sign up to speak. Okay. So we are now on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomed comments from citizens to address the council. There's a whole different set of things. We can, we don't have a table to sign up on. You had to contact the manager's office. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petition portion of the meeting. And I do have some people signed up to speak this evening. And I believe they are here as attendees. The first person I have signed up to speak is John Waller. And Mr. Bert moved you over. So if you could just state your name and address for the record and then you can deliver your remarks, sir.
Yes, thank you. My name is John Waller and I live at 116 Godfrey Road in Mystic. Madam Mayor, Honorable Councillors and my fellow Groton residents, I live in the neighborhood that is adjacent to the Mystic Education Center. And I've been following the, the project last February. I found out about that the council had approved the Respler Development Project for the former Mystic Education Center. And I just wanted to say that I'm wholeheartedly in favor of that, that project. At that time, I presented a letter to the council in favor of the project. So forgive me if anything I'm about to say sounds any bit familiar. I'm also an avid lover of the arts. And in 2003, I formed Connecticut Lyric Opera, which is the state's premier opera company. We perform throughout Connecticut. My wife is an international opera singer and a vocal instructor at Connecticut College. So after I learned of the, of the project, of the Respler Homes Project, it's now called Mystic River Bluffs, I reached out to the company to see if they might be interested in saving a space in that project to be used for the performing arts. And they invited me for a private tour in February, where much to my surprise, I found out that there was a 300-seat auditorium slash theater and that I had no idea even existed. And once I did the tour, they indicated that they were in favor of keeping the auditorium and renovating it as part of the project, part of the Pratt Building project as, that they're going to be turning over to the town. And I just wanted, again, to express my, my wholeheartedly, wholehearted support about this project. Since that time, I've been in contact with a number of other local performing arts organizations who are also interested in potentially using the, the theater. I'll call it a theater because that's what, basically what it is, auditorium. In addition to Connecticut Lyric Opera, there's Mystic River Corral, the AMA Dance Company, the Groton Regional Theater and others. And also Wendy Burry of the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition is very willing to, to help out in any way to try to, to save the theater and keep it as a performing arts space for the community. And during the summertime, there was the, the Greenways Survey of the, of the town. And I was part of the fact finding that they went through. And unfortunately, there wasn't a whole lot of questions or specifics about the auditorium in that survey. So I just wanted to provide a few more things that, to bring to your attention that, of course, if the theater were to be saved and renovated, it could provide a home for, in a venue for professional community-based performing arts organizations like the ones I mentioned. Could also be used to hold, hold a winter series of concerts like those held at Esther Point each summer that would highlight local bands that are extremely well-attended and eagerly anticipated. And it could be used as a performance and training venue for student and adult theater companies and other musical groups during the year and camps throughout the summer. And it could provide a location for community presentations for the town, such as candidate forums or state senate representative town hall events or other public service meetings, where the crowds are larger than the library or the town hall annex can hold. And in addition, there are many documented economic benefits that the arts provide to, to communities. So in conclusion, I just wanted to leave you with these three items. I wanted to let you, the council, know that I and others enthusiastically support the Mystic River Bluff Project and in particular, saving and renovating the Auditorium Theater at the Pratt Building. And I ask that before any decision is made about the auditorium, that a socially-distanced tour could be conducted with interested Groton and Mystic performing arts organizations and other residents. And finally, to let the council and the community know that I'd be happy to serve on any steering committee or council to help drive the process forward should, should a decision be made to keep the theater. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. And I certainly hope that you would give the auditorium at the Pratt Building the opportunity to become a vital part of the cultural community of Groton and Mystic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. I have Christopher Anino. I'm assuming that's Chris that is here as an attendee. Is that, is that Mr. Anino, Chris?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Mayor, yes.
All right, you have the floor, sir. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. 68 Village Lane Apartment 2, Groton, Connecticut. My name is Christopher Anino. John informed me about this, and which was happening with the auditorium there at the Pratt Building. I'm the co-founder of the New England Music Hall of Fame. We were created in 2019. We just had our first induction ceremony, October 2020. And we did a fundraiser for the Covenant Shelter in Willimantic, Connecticut. We'd like to bring our Hall of Fame to this building and do our inductions here. So far, we're, we're going to be inducting Cliff Goodwin, who was in Joe Cocker's band. He also played with Robert Palmer. Half of Johnny Winter's band, which includes Scott Spray and Bobby Trelle, who also played for Grace Slick from, from Jefferson Airplane and Jefferson Starship. We are a nonprofit. And what we'd like to do is, is we'd like to help this local community because it's a perfect, not only just a perfect venue, but a perfect location for, for any performing arts and anything to stimulate Mystic or Groton would, would really mean a lot to us because we would really like to give back toward this community. I, when I was a kid, I actually went to that auditorium to see a ballet. It was Nutcracker. I think it was Albano's Nutcracker. And it was very well done and they never did anything since then. I think, I do believe that was in 1992. It is a beautiful space to have any, any concert or any theater project. We're also working with the Shabu All-Stars. I don't know if you know about the Shabu? The Shabu is an inn that was very instrumental in the local music scene. Lefty Foster, the base in Willimantic, have the Shabu, the Shabu Stage. We're talking to him right now about having other concerts and they have an all-star band that has, again, a lot of legendary performers who play with Muddy Waters, you name it. And, you know, as I've read, there's going to be 2,000 more residents that are going to be there. And, I mean, it would be a nice thing in the cultural, especially having performing arts available in our own backyard. So, and I mean, between myself and John, we have a lot of contacts and artists that could come here and could really help benefit the area, actually. So I think that's pretty much it on my end. But I'm also the ambassador for the Blues Hall of Fame in Massachusetts. So I would love to maybe even consider bringing, doing a Blues Fest here. So that's, that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Anino. The next person I have is Tim Rooney. And I see Mr. Rooney is here as an attendee. Well, and he's been moved over. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable councillor members and fellow attendees, John especially. My name is Tim Rooney. I live at 20 Wilcox Road in Stonington. Although my husband and I are moving his dance theater, it's Alma Dance Theater, over to the Groton side as of this month. So we're pretty excited. It's, it's a small group. It's private and group training in ballet, as well as tap, hip-hop and jazz. We network with CCSU and a couple professionals, too, at Connecticut College. So when Philip, we basically were on our porch for a year. So we expanded and we found a great property on the Groton side. And I mean, we're super thrilled. What, what comes into question always for any arts organization, whether you're not-for-profit, like the Mystic River Corral, which I'm president of. So I'm, I'm pretty much in, in several, several awesome, small business enterprises locally. And I'm also an employee at Electric Boat. So I, I love where we live and I, and I just want to try to offer as much, as much to our, our community, as much as I've gained from 20 years living in New York. as much to our, our community as much as I've gained from 20 years living in New York City. What we recognize often for Philip, because it's such a small business. If we ever want to have a program for the, the students with their parents, it's, it's tough to find a rental that's feasible. You know, the guard has, has one rental fee, which is a bit out of our price range. The United Theater in Westerly, who knows? That's mixed media. That's up and coming. I don't know what their rental fee will be like. I know also Westerly Chorus in their hall. I have an understanding of what their rental fee is like. But it's kind of tough to put on a production locally if you're a small business, especially a new small business. So I would be curious to know at some point if you, if you hope to hold on to the auditorium. I think that would be, first of all, thrilling because it's local. Number two, I'm curious what your feasibility study would show as the cost for that renovation and what perhaps rate sheet it would be available to a performing arts organization, small and large in our area. So I'd be thrilled to hear about that. Likewise, I too, thank you, John, would be interested in a tour. If and when that could be an opportunity for us. Second of all, let me just talk just briefly about Mystic River Corral. It is a wonderful, wonderful organization that has been around almost for, our 40th anniversary is two years from now. And I'm recently new on the executive level there. I came to Stonington in 2014, although I grew up here as a, as a little kid. I even served ice cream at, in, in Watch Hill, Rhode Island. So if you guys have been there, I'm sure I've met you over the summer. But the, the thing with Mystic River Corral, we, we often would like to find a performance space other than the chapel at Con College. And it's hard to find a space that will allow us to perform both sacred and secular pieces. Roman Catholic churches that have some of the best acoustics, unfortunately, often have a requirement that it must be sacred music. Although I joke that many brides have secular instrumental music at their wedding. Nobody questions that, but if we happen to sing a beautiful spiritual or a secular piece that's not necessarily in the, the canon, we're not allowed to, to rent the space. I, I think that's, I find that sad. But it's, it's typical. That happens also in New York City. So, so we have always been able to perform with the Mystic Baptist Church or the Congregational Church here in Mystic. But they're small spaces. They're also very dry spaces. Tough to do a cappella music in a space that doesn't have an acoustic. Lastly, with the Mystic River Corral, I'd like us to evolve as an organization to include perhaps dance so that we would have a performance that includes perhaps members from Alma Dance Theater or another local dance theater or align with another arts institution or our fellow studio in this area where we could apply choral music and orchestral music to a dance movement. Very hard to put that production together in the current spaces available to us in this area. So I'll end it there. I'm super thrilled. Thank you for letting me join this evening. It's nice to see you. I'm off and on a Zoom at EB and you can't even see faces. So this is really super nice to see some of your faces. And I will close at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. And Mr. Burt, there was someone else trying to get in, but I don't have the ability to send them links. Mickey Weiss from the No-Ang Community Band. But I don't have, I don't have the ability to send him a link to be able to speak. Perhaps he could send, he could send an email. I received an email earlier this evening that I don't remember if I got it sent out to you guys or not. But if I did not send it, I will do that when the meeting is over from Barbara Tarbox in support of this also. That's all I have signed up to speak and I'm just checking the list here. I think everyone else that's here as an attendee is here for other business. I'm just cross-checking. So one second, please. Yes, I think that's everybody there. Give Mr. Burt a minute to see if he was able to contact.
I just, I just forwarded to their emails. So we'll, do I give it a second? See if they join?
Okay. Let's see. I'm scanning two. I have two lists here. I'm scanning, so. Do we want to start response to citizens petitions and then if Mr. Weiss joins us, we can let him speak if that's agreeable to the council?
Nope, he just showed up.
Oh, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss, you wish to speak, please. You have the floor, sir.
Hi. Well, thanks for giving me a chance to speak. I am a member of the Mystic No-Ang, or actually the No-Ang Mystic.
Do we want to start response to citizens petitions and then if Mr. Weiss joins us, we can let him speak if that's agreeable to the council?
Nope, he just showed up.
Oh, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss, you wish to speak, please. You have the floor, sir.
Can you hear me?
Can you turn off the TV that you have going in the background or the computer?
I am a member of No-Ang, or actually the No-Ang Mystic.
Mr. Weiss? You'll have to turn off whatever device you have running in the background because we're picking that up. Are you there, Mr. Weiss?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, let's try that. Very good. Thanks. We were getting lots of feedback.
Okay. Well, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a member of the No-Ang Mystic Community Band. And I almost made a very bad error by calling it the Mystic No-Ang Community Band. They're very sensitive to the order of that. Anyway, and, and like some of the other speakers who just addressed you, we also find it very difficult to find a venue for our performances. And currently, we, it's kind of hit or miss. Sometimes we can get a space at the Groton City Municipal Building. And sometimes we can't. We are also a nonprofit. We don't charge for the, for the audience that comes to our concerts. And so we can't afford some of the more commercial venues that, that might be available to other larger groups. We do have, I think, close to 50 members of the No-Ang Mystic Band and its affiliates. There's some jazz bands and so on that are also affiliated. And we're all looking for a place to play. So the Pratt Auditorium at the, in the proposed old Oral School Mystic Educational Center complex would be an ideal place for both performances and for rehearsals. Because we also currently, we currently rehearse in the basement of the No-Ang Firehouse. And the fire folks have been extremely nice to us to let us do that, but that space is also very cramped and certainly not a place where we can perform. I think it would be valuable if, when you negotiate with the developers that they be induced to not only renovate that space and make it up to snuff for, for groups like ours, but also to work it into their business plan so that it could be supported as a, an ongoing facility available for our group and some of the other groups that were mentioned by the previous speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Burt, I don't have anyone else. When I do the scan of the list, it's all people that I believe are here for other purposes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So we will go to response to citizens petitions. And we have Counselors of Perry has his hand up first.
I'd like to thank all of you who came forward to speak about your concern for performing arts in Mystic and the use of that auditorium for those purposes. I'd like to know from, it looks like we've lost some of the folks that signed in. If any of you are there, what are you accustomed to paying for venue for your performances?
Um, I'm not sure if you can hear me. This is.
Yeah, John, I hear you.
Yeah. The guard is approximately $7,000 per, per night. And that's for a 1,500-seat auditorium where a 300, if you get 300 people to show up, it's a good number of people, but it looks empty because there's still 1,200 empty seats. And that $7,000 is not a sustainable number for all the organizations that have spoken this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt Counselors of Perry because the question should be just to clarify the citizens petitions, please. So.
We heard, no, it is to clarify the petitions. They, they spoke to us about the difficulty in getting a site and the affordability of a site. I want to know what, what they expect to have to pay. Because not only do we have to provide a site, we have to clean the site. We have to provide, I, I, I'm sure that many of the musicians are not going to bring their own piano. So we're going to be looking at providing a piano and an organ. They can bring their own instruments as far as those that can be carried in. But there are things that we'll have to provide and to provide them, I think we're going to need to generate some income from that. And I just wanted to know if, if these organizations are willing to, what they, what they expect to be paying is, as I think about this issue. As you know, I'm very much in concert with them. But I, I, I've been looking ahead to some of the hurdles we have to overcome. So, Mr. Rooney, you have a smaller outfit. What are you accustomed to paying for a, for a venue for a performance?
Sure. Anywhere between 250 and 500 a performance.
And does the site provide you with any kind of instruments that, such as a piano or organ that you could use?
Yes. Yep.
This is discussion.
I'm sorry.
Clarifying. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to cut you off. I'm so sorry, Mr. Rooney. But I believe this is discussion, point of order.
Thank you. Your, your point of order stands. I believe we need to just keep the questions much more focused on what they spoke to this evening and then the rest of it will be addressed at another time if the council so chooses to raise this issue again.
I think it's something that we're going to have to consider. It is relative to what they spoke to. But if it's the wish of, if it's the wish of the, the mayor, I will button it up.
Please. Thank you. We're, we're trying to keep it clarification. Thank you, Counselors of Perry for being magnanimous about it. I appreciate that. Council Board of Glan, do you have a clarifying question, ma'am?
Counselor Bordelone, you're unmuted.
You're muted, Counselor Bordelone.
My understanding, it doesn't have to be just a clarifying question. It also can be just a comment and reference to what they stated, correct?
As long as we don't get into discussion, you may make a comment. Yes, thank you.
Well, that's, I'm just clarifying because it says comments. Response to citizens. So you can make a response, correct? Because you introduced me and said clarifying comments. So I want to make sure.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. At first, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to John and Chris and Tim and Mr. Weiss for speaking. One of the things that when I first got on the council was definitely in, in large support of the arts. And a lot of my concerns were that Groton did not have enough of its own venues and art locations. Most times I find myself traveling to New London to go to the Guard Arts Theater, which they put on a wonderful performance. But there really isn't a standing location designated in our town that is designated as an arts and culture center or location where students, members of the community, visitors could come and come enjoy the arts, which I'm a huge fan of. I spent a lot of time in Westerly enjoying their arts programs and with United coming in, I'm very excited for that. I, when this Pratt Building became a part of an idea or discussion to become in with the, with that building, I was not under the impression initially that there'd be anything done with that area. So I'm in full support of the arts. I think we need more of it here in Groton. I do think we lack on the Parks and Rec sector. I think that we offer a lot of wonderful programs, but there's a lot of things in relationship to the arts that we do not have. And it would be nice to say that I can go enjoy a live show inside an auditorium in the winter. In this area, we have a lot to offer outside at the beaches, but not a nice indoor venue. So I appreciate you guys coming out and speaking to your concerns of wanting to have this. I, I'm in full support of the arts and please reach out to me with any of your thoughts and ideas. And I look forward to seeing how we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Counselor Obray wished to speak.
Still needs to unmute her.
You're muted, Counselor Obray? Can you unmute Counselor Obray? I can't unmute her.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, we're having a presentation on the results of the survey tonight. And I think it's probably more appropriate for us to be discussing it at that time rather than holding up the other people that are ready to come forward.
Point of order. I find that extremely disrespectful and, and I respect that you have some decorum. My comments were my response to those particular citizens and I don't think that comment was warranted with all respect. Thank you.
Counselor Obray, you're so noted, Counselor Obray. Thank you very much. Any other counselors wish to respond to citizens petitions, comments and concerns? Okay, seeing none, we are on to the consent calendar. And all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. So I think we started with Counselor Bumgardner. So Counselor Franco, could you move the consent calendar, please?
Counselor Bumgardner had his hand up while you were reading.
Counselor Bumgardner, did you have your hand up while I was reading, sir?
I did, Madam Mayor. But if it's, if, if we have to go on further, that, that's okay. But I, if it's okay.
For, for what purpose, sir? I'm sorry.
This is for responses to citizens petitions.
Go ahead.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to acknowledge that I, I did receive several correspondencies from constituents, many of them speaking tonight and others that did not with respect to the auditorium. And just to echo many of the remarks made by my colleagues, absolutely, you know, couldn't, couldn't agree more that the arts are a cornerstone of our community. Really in every part of our, our town. And, you know, when you look at our neighboring communities, you know, obviously in New London, you think of the guard. And we really don't have a location where performing arts can have a space that is, you know, can utilize a space that, that they, that is not currently available in many parts in our region. And I, I think there is something to be said about that. Certainly that space, the Pratt Building, you know, I, I mentioned in the past, it's a place where I learned how to swim. And it has so many unique features and I, I very much look forward to the presentation, you know, from the town tonight and certainly Green Pet Play and their work as well. But I, I do hope that as plans are finalized, that we incorporate an auditorium in the, you know, when it's part of the programming for that building in the future. Because I, I do think, especially in a post-COVID world where we can start enjoying the arts again. You know, it would be great for, for Groton to offer such a facility. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and thank you for acknowledging me.
Certainly. I did not mean to overlook you, sir. I was just moving along with the agenda. So we are on to the consent calendar. Counselor Franco, could you move the consent calendar, please?
I sure can. Make a resolution accepting a. Make a resolution accepting a town council meeting minutes. Resolve that the minutes of the town council meeting of December 1st, 2020.
I'm sorry, we are moving, everything is one this evening. It says all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine. So if you just move the consent calendar, someone will second it, then we'll go into discussion of all the items as needed, please.
I don't have to put the dates in of which minutes were passed?
I think if you just do consent calendar and then we'll go in and we'll look at each thing individually, thank you.
Okay, make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Thank you, is there a second? I don't know.
Bordelain.
Thank you, Councillor Bordelain.
Yeah.
So the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. The consent calendar this evening is rather full. We have three sets of minutes, as Councillor Franco started reading. We have appointments and reappointments, and we also have special trust fund contributions. I just want to note before we begin any discussion on this that we have over 300 donors who very generously gave to the people in our community who are in need. And though we can't read all the names this evening, please know that the town greatly appreciates everything, all your generosity that you have shared with your fellow Groton people, so thank you so much. Is there any discussion on any of the minutes? I see Councillor Franco and Councillor Bordelain, Councillor Franco, please.
Yes, on page 13 of the minutes, I believe it's 13, let me see. Beginning on page 12, going into 13, the resolution adopting the rules for the 32nd Town Council is, the vote is incorrect. Myself and Councillor Bordelain didn't vote a no on that one, we voted against that motion.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna repeat it just so that we're clear that we have the correct thing. So you are looking at the minutes of the Tuesday, December 1st meeting. And the vote that is shown at the top of page 13 is incorrect. And again, because Franco and Bordelain voted in opposition, is that correct, Councillor Franco, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. Okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
The clerk is here, welcome, welcome, Madam Clerk. The manager did an acceptable job in your stead this evening, so thank you.
I knew you would, I knew you would, no doubt.
All right, very good, so that's one notation for the minutes. And now we are on Councillor Bordelain, did you have something for the consent calendar, ma'am?
Yes, I was going to bring that up as well. But I also do think it's important that we do recognize the folks that have donated since they go out of their way to do such. Maybe we cannot do it all tonight, but I think it's important that on other days, maybe that we tackle some and then leave some for another meeting. I think it is important, or post it somehow if the people would like. But I think it is important to make sure that they are recognized, thank you.
I agree, Councillor Bordelain.
Well, all of the names are included in your packet this evening, they're all listed there in the minutes. And it was quite overwhelming and quite touching actually to see so many people. Madam Clerk, did you wish to address this?
I just wanted people to know that the agenda packet is forever on the internet. So these names will be forever on the internet unless the internet goes away. So, and so they're part of the minutes forever also. Your minutes are permanent, they're never to be destroyed.
Thank you. All right, I see no other discussion, so we will vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Bordelain.
Abstentions? So we have seven in favor, one opposed, Bordelain, zero abstentions. Madam Clerk, we are at eight councillors this evening.
May I just ask a quick question? When we pass this, is that with the change included?
Yes.
All right, because we used to say that, but when there is a change, we're not saying that anymore. So I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
The clerk acknowledged, when she spoke up and acknowledged that she had that change, I knew we were okay with it, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we are on to communication and reports. And this is other than committee reports, so we have town councillors and we'll go around where we used to sit at the table. So Councillor Bumgardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in receipt, I believe other councillors received a letter from Dick Fitzgerald. And just acknowledging that note. Quick question to Manager Burt. Where are we right now with mystical access issues as it relates to Fort Rachel?
It's on the agenda for next week.
Okay, excellent, and will we be getting information ahead of time with the agenda to prepare for that meeting?
Well, there's not a lot of new information, it's basically the same thing, other than I'll give a report on, which I think you've probably already read in the paper, I'll give a report on, you know, the interactions with the Fort Rachel Marina owner.
Okay, and will there be a draft motion where there will be an expected course of action the council can take? Or?
I mean, you can take action, but I wasn't planning on preparing a motion myself, I'm not sure which way the council wishes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
What I won't say, though, I won't put no action expected, you know how we sometimes do that? That won't be on there.
Okay, yeah, thank you, and just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Franco.
Thank you, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, council and residents of the town. So, I wanted to share with the residents and businesses who may be watching that there is new schedule funding that has come out recently, and it's going to be dispersed shortly for businesses, a multitude of different types of funding and apprenticeships and being able to educate yourself and get better jobs. And there's a multitude, so please look out for these things if you're interested. And on some of them, if you need help, I'm sure you could contact the Economic Development Department at the town. They always seem to be willing to help businesses. I want to send my condolences to the many residents of Groton and our community who have passed away over the past maybe month or so. Mr. Fred Hahn, Josh Ackley, Mr. Thomas Potter, who has been, had multiple contact with us via email. A former City Groton firefighter, J.D. Edwards. And all those that have passed away from COVID and the messages that we've received from them. So, you know, my heartfelt condolences. And I would like to have my, send my best wishes to Councillor Bumgardner on his new endeavor. I just heard the other day that he will be running for the city mayorship. I wish you luck on your campaign. I would like to say congratulations to Councillor Bordelain for her recent nuptials last, this past weekend, and congratulations to you and Ian, I wish you a lifetime of happiness. And that's all I have, thank you.
Councillor Heath.
Thank you, I have nothing to report.
Councillor Obrey. Councillor Obrey, you're muted? Councillor Obrey?
Thank you. This last week, I've spent most of my time actually trying to get the word out about the fact that there was going to be a report tonight on the theater and the possibility of what would be done with it. I'm thrilled with the people that were able to call in. So I'll be talking about that more, but that's really been, the, most of my time has been put into that. Thank you.
Certainly. Councillor Bumgardner, I do see your hand, but I wanted to give the rest of the councillors a chance to speak unless it's an emergency. Okay, very good. Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you, first, I just want to say, you know, I send my sympathy and condolences to all the families that have lost loved ones through COVID and through this tough time. I too have been directly affected, not with COVID, but I have lost a dear friend that was a former resident of Groton, military family and a longtime friend that I met through the military here in Groton. Forty-six years old, she passed on December 10th. Even though she was not in our state, she was a big part of this community. She, her name was Lauren Bomar, she was a para in Mary Morrison. She did a lot of different enrichments, she was a big instrumental part of the Groton Bible Chapel over in Groton. So, as a frontline worker, as well as my, I guess I'll call him my spouse tonight, since it's been announced, my spouse works in the prison as a teacher. And I work daily in a practice where the providers are in and out of procedures and/or coming out of the hospital daily, reporting the COVID cases, and they're doing rounds. I'm directly exposed to all of that. And living in a household where we're both frontline workers, recently losing an actual friend that was 46 years old, a mother of the two boys the same age as my sons, really hit home hard for me. So, not that I didn't believe, because I'm around the medical field daily, and Ian is around it in the prison. It really came full circle when I got the notice that she went in and was, within two weeks, was put on a ventilator and then was, I got the call at work on the 10th that she had passed. So, anyone who doesn't take this serious, I encourage you guys to really watch and be cautious of what you're doing. And it is taking people that did not have a pre-existing medical condition and was 46 years old. So, why some are, you know, succumbing that much to it, we still don't know, and why others do not. So, for me, the stress and the level now going in daily is really tough. And in this community of people, once again, I think of the students, I have two sons, one who loves distance learning, one who really can't manage it and who was a very well-attended student. So, the families who are struggling finding childcare when the school closes last minute. The struggling adolescents that are home with no help and are logging on to the computers and that's all they have, and they don't learn in that capacity. The parents working on the frontline, cops, doctors, lawyers, teachers, who are not able to be home and want to be home, and their kids are forced to be home working on schoolwork by themselves while their family members are at work, running the risk of contracting COVID. The stress is real and I hear you, and I feel your pain on a daily basis from the bottom of my heart. So, I just want to say that I can't stress more the need and the help for support for our community, the need for everybody to help and look out for neighbors, let it be grabbing groceries or seeing if anybody needs anything. So, I just really wanted to cover that. And Groton is still having seven days a week COVID testing over at the school. I can't think of the name, I'm just drawing a blank, I see the. Pleasant Valley, thank you, there's so many schools in Groton. The former Pleasant Valley, even though it is not open, it is utilizing the parking lot. And I've gone several times myself, and it's been very efficient. And so, please, you know, do the right thing. And I know that we want to be together, but it's just really tough. So, with that, again, I also want to congratulate Andre on his decision to step up. I think it's important in our community when people, young, and decide to run for office. So, that's really exciting, and that's it, thank you.
Councillor Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'm confident that 2021 will be better than 2020. And, but other than that, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir, Councillor Zepary.
No report.
Happy New Year to everyone. Continue to mask up, and I just wanted to offer condolences to the friends and family of Jason Vincent. I know there are a lot of people out there that are grieving this evening and some people that wanted to be with us tonight, but they couldn't because they are together and celebrating Jason at this point. So, my condolences to the family.
Real quick, if we could, I think today is Councillor Melendez's birthday, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, it's actually my father's birthday.
On Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy birthday to your dad, Councillor Melendez.
Same name, same name.
Councillor Bumgardner wished to speak again, if no one objects?
Yes, I would like to take a point of personal privilege to acknowledge Councillor Franco. Over the break, she organized a basket to, baskets to be delivered to Lawrence Memorial Hospital and specifically the COVID unit. And put together a really beautiful spread, but also a really nice note and a very crafty way. And also, selfishly, you know, just gave a gift that I absolutely adore. It was a small budding tree, and I very much look forward to planting it here in our community. And I hope others who may have gotten a tree also follow suit. Because I think the best way to start the new year is, you know, planting our new seeds. So, I thank you, Councillor Franco, for your, and certainly, you know, I thank our frontline workers as well. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Well, good evening, the representative town meeting will be meeting again on the 13th of January. That's our first meeting of the new year. At their last meeting in December, they did pass on the report from the citizen group that was discussing, well, they were reviewing police action and any citizen participation with the police community. So you have that report. And also, the First District elected Joe Burrell to fill a vacancy. And so, that leaves us with one more vacancy in the Third District that should be handled at the January 13th meeting. And that's about it for the RTM, and I don't have a report for the council prepared.
Mr. Burt, do you have anything to report this evening, sir?
I think of a real quick COVID update, if you're interested. In the, per the newest two-week report that came out late last week, the average daily rate of COVID positives in Groton increased from 40.2 to 44.7 per 100,000 per day. There was 242 positive cases over the last two weeks. So far in the town cumulative, we've had 1,338 cases with unfortunately 56 deaths. So, you know, I also give my sympathy to all the families. To mention planning and what they're up to in terms of trying to help businesses with COVID, there will be, or about to start an eat local program like we did before with prizes for people showing receipts, that type of thing. And then in February, it'll be a shop local program. So that should be getting underway soon. And we were originally scheduled to open our facilities next Monday on January 11th. I am delaying that indefinitely for now, as long as our numbers are high, we will remain by appointment only. So we will, and so we will not be opening fully to walk-ins yet. I should mention, we have some COVID-related issues in the library. And due to that and staffing issues, they will be closed this upcoming Saturday, just in terms of coverage, they couldn't do it. So, but they'll be open by curbside otherwise, any other day besides that.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. I don't believe we have any report from the superintendent, Board of Ed or Department Heads this evening. So we are on to committee reports, we just had Committee of the Whole Personnel and Appointments Chairman Melendez, do you have anything you wish to report, sir?
Yes, um, let me just review what we appointed as an alternate, Annie Oosterwijk, to the Inland Wetlands Agency. We reappointed John Burt to the Retirement Board, reappointed Carol Pratt to the Retirement Board, reappointed Natalie Billings to the Community Development Advisory Committee, reappointed Mary Levinson to the Community Development Advisory Committee. And we appointed from an alternate to a full member, Stephen Pierce, to the Community Development Advisory Committee. We'd like to thank all of those people who. all of those people who volunteered to to help us out, to make some decisions for the town and and I would just like to note that there are vacancies on various town boards. You can go on the town website and look to see if there's anything that you're interested in. That's always appreciated. And if I could just ask one process question to the mayor. We had a referral come to us a few months back about a recognizing longstanding committee volunteers after they leave with some sort of plaque and we voted in favor of it. And I was just curious, how do we now get that onto this, onto the committee at the whole? Do I need to make another referral? Or how does that work?
So it is on the open agenda items and it is on our list. We can just, we can take that up further when we get to that last item on the agenda. But no, you don't need to make another referral. It's just a matter of when we're going to be able to fit it in and the urgency with which the council wishes to take it up.
Okay, I see, I see. Okay, thank you. That's that's all I have then.
Okay, you're welcome. Councilor Bordelon has her hand up, so she may have a question for you, Councilor Melendez.
Actually, I did not have a question for Councilor Melendez. I appreciate you asking. My question actually goes back because we zipped right through. Mr. Burt gave his report and then you didn't leave any room for anybody to ask any questions if they had any. So that was my.
Do you have a question for Mr. Burt?
I just wanted to see that that's normally what we do is after a staff member speaks, then we usually pause and say, is there any questions for the town manager at that time? So it didn't allow for anybody to ask any questions or raise their hand as we moved right on. So.
Okay, so you don't have any questions at this point?
I do, but I'm not saying that I could be the only one. I'm just asking if we could go back.
So if you have a question, I'd appreciate if you could ask it now, please. Thank you.
So it's, you're saying move forward? I'm not sure who you were directing that to. I want to be sure I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're asking. Do you have a question or were you asking a point of procedure?
No, I was just asking if you want me to go now or you want me to come cycle back if you were going to keep going.
No, if you have a question, please ask it because we've taken more time discussing whether you have a question. You could just ask the question, please. Thank you.
Well, that's neither here nor there, but I, my question was to with open space public app access in reference to how that's going to be drafted and if we wanted more actions and more investigation into some of the findings down there, how do we proceed with that?
That's entirely up to the council to decide. If the council directs it, we'll do it.
Okay, so we submit something and or
Imagine you bring it up right after during the topic next week when it comes up.
But it was brought up before and then it was kind of
Well, it has to be on the agenda now to discuss, so it'll be on the agenda next week. It can't be further discussed tonight. We can't take any action tonight.
I wasn't asking for it to be taken up tonight or action tonight. Once again, I was referring to the fact that when it was on the agenda and discussed, no one really wanted to do much and I had asked other suggestions, which I haven't gotten any further findings or results on. So I'm asking for
I was directed, yeah. Yeah, I was directed not to do anything further on it other than meeting with the marine owner. That was the direction of the council to me.
A little confused actually now. Because then it was another meeting where people came out and were in support of it and then everyone said, oh, let's keep going. We should look into it more. We should bring the issue back up.
And I was expressly directed to not do anything other than to to meet with the marine owner and then report back, which is next week.
So that's the only reporting that we've done so far. Okay, so there's, so if we, one wants to bring up more issues regarding that, that meeting, we can bring it up or submit something in writing.
Sure. It just has to be council approved.
I think I've learned the process. Thank you.
Chairman O'Bry for rules.
No meeting, no report.
And Chairman Baumgartner for public safety.
No meeting, however, I did read through the court committee recommendations. Very sizable document. I would highly encourage every counselor to read it. I think what is incredible about that document is that while there are consensus recommendations, it also includes the perspectives of each individual commission, committee member. And I, you know, irrespective of how you feel on on any issue, you know, whether it's policing or or environmental issues or what have you, I think it's super important to include the perspectives and takeaways from from every single member involved. So I would again encourage every member to read it. One clarifying question I have for either the mayor or the manager, it's with respect to Council Franco's previous question and I do regarding the amount of time and item needs to or amount of time that can, the amount of time we have to discuss an item and take action on an item until let me walk that back. I guess my question is, if we have exhausted the amount of time we can spend on a topic, would we need to make a a re-referral so we could take up that issue again to discuss the matter of the the initial referral? In that way, we can, the committee can begin deliberating on the recommendations made by Cork. So I guess my question is, have we, is that referral still, would that referral need a revote from the council?
So you, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, can report back to us your findings at any of the council meetings because you're a standing item at the council meeting. So if you have something to report back that you've done in committee, you have, you have been listed there to report out to us. If there's something in particular that you are looking for from the rest of the council, then I would ask that you put that in writing for everyone. But, you know, I I should not speak for everyone, but I expected that anything coming out of public safety would be reported out through your committee at these meetings. So if you have things you need to report, then at our next meeting, you are welcome to do so. If you have something else that you would like to address, then just as we do with any other matter, ask, ask your peers for support for a referral. We could do a new referral. So it's really up to you and it really matters as to what the particulars are of the item you're looking at.
And I didn't want to run afoul of any rules if we were to have a public safety committee meeting where we would begin discussing the court committee findings. And I did not want to do so if, again, we we were essentially in violation of, you know, the rule regarding referrals.
So you're asking about discussion of that particular item then, not not something that you already have before you. Yes. So then, yes, that could be a new referral that could go to public safety then. So you can ask for support from the counselors in writing and then I'm sure that you would get the support to take that up in your public safety committee. I hope that answers your question.
Most certainly. And just to close thing, close things out, when we do have that meeting, I I do hope that I think it is helpful concern. Whatever recommendations come out of the public safety committee end up going, will end up going before the entire council. I would encourage members of, you know, the council who are interested to participate in our public, public safety committee meetings, although, you know, you know, myself, Counselor Heed and Counselor Bordelon are voting members. I still think it's always helpful for the discussion when we have other councils as well. Thank you.
Councilor Franco, is your hand in regard to this item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The Cork Committee, actually, the recommendation had gone to the RTM, the whole RTM had agreed to send it over to our, to the council. So it was sent to the council. Do we have to refer this report from the council over to the safety committee now? Because it was not directly sent to the safety committee, it was sent to the council.
Right. And no one has sent anything to take it up. So at this point, we're waiting for someone to say that they want to move it forward. So this is something that was sent from them to us. We've received it. I'm assuming everyone's read it and processed it. So at this point now, we can take, if if the council so desires, the council can take this item up.
Right. And Councilor Baumgartner, I believe the the rule you're talking about, the time limit, that was based on if you were going, if we were sending you to create an ordinance from what the town clerk had advised us. So if you are just working on a policy and or maybe something that you want to bring back to the council to maybe vote to make a policy or some type of referral, I don't think the time limit is in play, but I believe the, if you were going to create an ordinance, the time has has gone past the time limit on that. Thank you.
All right, so we are done with committee reports and we are on to new business. This evening, we have two items of new business. The first is twenty twenty eight five six Green Play in Peary Presentation Recreation Survey and Pratt Building Reuse. This begins on page forty-one in your packet and I apologize if I said the name incorrectly. We have several people with us this evening on this item. We have Mr. Berry from our Parks and Rec Department. We have Melissa Cops. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your names correctly. Pat O'Toole, Lori Peary and Lisa Wolf, I believe, are all here for this particular item. So I will yield the floor to Mr. Berry at this point to walk us through your presentation and I just wanted to say thank you very much for your presentation. I know your staff has put a lot of work into this and the recreation staff does an excellent job. And in particular, I was pleased, I know this is slightly off topic, but I'm going there, the Groton locker room idea, which was a big hit and people are very thrilled that you're doing that. So very creative ideas that you have. Thank you so much. And Mr. Berry, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. In June of two thousand nineteen, the town issued an RFQ for the purpose of conducting an engineering assessment of the Pratt Recreation Building, a community needs assessment, including preferred uses of the Pratt Building and a feasibility study to estimate operations and maintenance costs along with projected revenue. The project scope also included a conceptual design that would best meet the community needs based on the community engagement process. Lisa Wolf and Pat O'Toole are representing Green Play, the principles of the project. They will be highlighting the community engagement process, including stakeholder meetings, focus groups and the community needs assessment. Laura Peary and Melissa Cops from Peary Associates, the architectural firm, will be presenting the process to arrive at the conceptual design. So at this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Lisa Wolf from Green Play.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a little interesting being on the opposite side here because I don't get to see myself as I'm presenting. So hopefully, I don't know, even though if you all can see me, can you see me? Yeah. Okay, awesome. All right, perfect. So thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to present to you tonight the results of what we feel is a very well-rounded process of engagement for the, as Mark in the townwide community recreational needs assessment and feasibility study, as well as an engineering analysis of the
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just answering your question, I certainly agree that you can share your screen. I'm not sure if Mr. Bird has given you the ability to share your screens. I just wanted to check that and if he has given you that ability, go right ahead, please.
I'm sorry, could you describe how we might share a screen? The usual controls that I recognize for that I don't see available.
That's what I was just wondering if the manager had given you the ability to share.
It should be, it should be set now.
Okay.
And where would I find the control to do that?
I believe he made Ms. Wolf co-host, so Ms. Wolf would have the ability.
Right. This is Laura Peary speaking and I'll be here.
Okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna
Give me one second here.
Certainly. So then Ms. Laura Peary will be the, will be co-host and she'll be able to screen share, correct, Mr. Burt?
It should be set now.
There you go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry to interrupt you. We are not seeing yet.
My apologies. I see that the screen is up, but I'm not sure that that's my screen, in fact. Lisa.
There we go.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing the presentation now. I'm not sure whose screen it is, but it is visible. Thank you, whoever did that. You have the floor, ma'am.
I'm waiting for Lisa Wolf to begin the presentation from Green Play. Lisa, you might be muted. I don't see your image on the screen at the moment.
Here she is muted.
Lisa, if you would unmute, you can begin.
I just, thank you. I just got a message saying that I needed to unmute. Okay, sorry about that. I'm not sure how that's all being handled, but irregardless, okay, so we are here tonight, as I began to mention to you all, talk a little bit about the results from our intense process of community engagement as Mark had mentioned. So I come from a background, not to, not to belabor a lot of our discussion. I know this has been a long meeting, but I'm a thirty-one-year employee of Parks and Recreation and work for Green Play as a project consultant. So I'll let our other team members that are with us real quickly introduce themselves, Laura and Melissa.
Good evening. I'm Laura Peary, Principal of Peary Associates Architects. We're located in New Haven, Connecticut, and we work with various agencies and private clients around the state in a, in a variety of ways, particularly historic building assessments, building assessments and conceptual design. So as well as community engagement. So we're pleased to be here tonight. My colleague Melissa Cops is here as well and will be participating in the second half of the presentation tonight.
Right. So you should be able to see in front of you now the agenda of how we will proceed with this presentation this evening. The first items that we'll talk about will be, are really heavily focused on the community outreach process and the findings that we saw through that process, followed up by the aspirations of the Pratt facility in the town and that's Laura's group and team will begin the review following that, moving forward with existing conditions assessments, strategies and concept options. And then the review of the plans incorporating the feedback from staff with the Parks and Recreation Department. So as we go through here, what what I really want to focus on is the the amount of in-depth process that we take within Green Play for the engagement. Many of you, I do believe, were involved and on some of our focus groups and stakeholder phone calls. Unfortunately, when we, we typically would prefer to do those meetings in person. However, that was when COVID hit. So our we stepped back and punted a little bit and I'm proud to really say that Groton was our first town as far as Green Play goes, that really became heavily engaged in the virtual concept of public engagement for a master planning process and feasibility study. So we had some great success through the feedback of your community. Our process began last year, really back in the fall of two thousand nineteen and going into this year, this past twenty twenty year. We had been on site pre-COVID to actually visit the Pratt facility and to meet with staff and have our strategic kickoff meetings two times. And then our virtual engagement process as COVID began really And then our virtual engagement process, as COVID began, really started in April of this year, where we had the focus group and stakeholder meetings. We took into consideration the process of outreach, and these are some of the results that you will see here, where we dove deeply within the Groton community. The virtual community engagement process brought us fifty-two participants. And typically, you all are probably familiar with town meetings or public meetings that might be open for, um, public input, where you might have five or ten people, maybe a few more, give or take, for, um, input on any type of a planning process. And we were proud to say that we had those fifty-two individuals take part in actual, the actual community engagement and public meeting. We hosted three focus group meetings with twenty-five participants and five stakeholder interviews with eight participants. Some of you are all part of those meetings. And then comments and feedbacks from the meetings were very similar in comparison to the results of the statistically valid survey, which many of you all probably participated in, either through the invited mailed copy to your residents or through the open link opportunity to provide feedback. Overall, you'll see here that the outreach process, the statistically valid invitation survey was mailed. We had mailed thirty-eight hundred seventy-four surveys. Those were actually mailed as hard copies with self-addressed stamped envelopes, where the, um, individuals and citizens could actually complete that and mail that back, or they were able to complete the same exact invitation survey online through a passcode-protected website. The open link survey, as I mentioned, was available to all residents in the area. We had thirty-eight seventy-four mailed and seven hundred and one, whoops, total completed surveys. And then, um, you can see the breakdown of actual invitation surveys and the open link surveys that were completed, where as we went through the survey, or as we go through the survey, you'll see the overall combination of representation, as well as the breakdown of the, the invitation and open link. The outreach process, one of the key demographical, um, pieces of information that we like to capture is how many years of residency has that participant in the survey actually had within the Groton or within that respective town or city? As you can see here in this pie chart, um, you all are very prevalent with folks, residents of twenty-one-plus years at thirty-eight percent. So those individuals that completed the survey, thirty-eight percent of them have lived in your town for twenty-one-plus years. As you look over directly across from that, you'll see the, the two categories I'm going to classify as the one, less than one year up to the five-year range. And you'll see that's right about twenty-nine percent. So your, your community is really kind of diverse in the sense that you have one large group of long-term residents, as well as a lot of new residential, um, populations moving into the community. As we went through, um, the presentation and, and we heard Laura and I and Melissa, I believe, have been on the call since the beginning of your meeting today. So we did, we were able to hear a lot of the input of the, those individuals who called in to participate and give their feedback, um, about the Pratt facility. And the thing that's, I think, the key important here, the key focus is that this process was a community assessment of recreation services with the Pratt facility as a section of that survey and process. So what does that mean? I know there have been questions, probably, there were, I think a comment was made earlier that there may have not been any questions or enough questions in reference to the Pratt facility on the survey. There were actually twenty-seven questions on the survey, and of those twenty-seven questions, four of those were directly related to the Pratt facility. We were able to capture the needs through the recreational side of the survey to provide what type of activities are important to the Groton residents. And so here, this is a one question that's specifically related to the Pratt facility. And that question was related to how, what's, would be, which facilities would be most important to your household? And these are ranking the top three. I believe the, um, the town manager, or maybe Mark had shared, I think, some of this information with you all um, earlier this week, but here you'll see the breakdown of where you have the overall combination of the invite and open link survey to come up with the, the column that says overall. And then the other two columns are those individual surveys themselves. So it seems, as you go through this, the top three, um, rankings within the, for each of those households are clearly outlined here, as with the swim lap lanes, the fitness areas, another aquatic facility here with, as far as a warm water activity pool. And then going down the list, you have the zero entry pool, at, um, family changing rooms, group exercise rooms, et cetera, moving forward. So then you take that same exact question and you bring it back around to the fact of the length of residency, as you can see here at the top, oh, length of residency here, and you're looking at somewhat similar numbers overall. But your categories, as we had mentioned earlier, are still representative within similarities within that pie chart. So you have eighteen percent for the five years or less category of residency, to, up to the fourteen percent of the twenty-one years of residency, where that swim lap lanes is highly important as far as the top three. So very similar, similar recommendations as far as activities and facilities overall for Pratt. That previous chart is a little bit easier to see here in a pie chart. For some reason, we, our eyes seem to be a little more, um, welcoming to the pie chart. So overall, you will see that everything on the right are the larger numbers that were represented in the results of the top three rankings. So the swim lap lanes, fitness areas, including cardio equipment and free weights, the zero, the leisure pool with the zero depth entry, the warm water activity pool and family changing rooms, followed by all of these other categories here that are focused on typically within a recreational facility or building. Overall, the rankings by household, um, for the Pratt facility, these were the ones that seemed to be the highest rankings and priorities, similar within that. I'll give you all a second. I don't, I assume you can see the writing on your screens. So with that, I'm gonna let Laura take the lead based on the, the information that your community provided throughout this process of both focus groups, stakeholder meetings, as well as the survey input, followed by the findings presentation, which was a public meeting where I believe some of you, I think, were, um, tuned in on as well. Laura was able to move forward with her team for the next discussion.
Thanks, Lisa, and I assume you'll keep, uh, advancing the slides.
Happy to.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
So, um, out of the public participation and the, uh, valid survey that had to do with the overall recreational facilities for the entire town, once we understood that predisposition, we took the discussion and overviewed or summarized the aspirations, our takeaways of the aspirations for the Pratt facility with, through the lens of it being a recreational facility. Um, out of the, uh, recreational components and within that context of it being a recreation facility, the priorities for the community could be summarized in these four bullets. Connecting people in place, people understood that a recreational facility isn't at this point just somewhere for people to go, uh, lift some weights and lift the community. So connecting people to the place and to each other were the top two priorities as kind of support aspirations for Parks and Rec, um, activities in this location. There was a strong desire to innovate around health and wellbeing, thinking of this, um, as a place to not just rehash existing Parks and Rec, um, opportunities, but how could we create other opportunities or recreational activities or way of presenting those activity that was new and innovated and focused on health and wellbeing of a larger community? And that, uh, repeated aspirations to extend into kind of the social connection and the connection to place. That became evident around desire, desires around hiking trails and outdoor activities, uh, being connected to the indoor activities that could go on in the Pratt building. Last, there was a, a desire to create a world-class facility, a, a facility that didn't feel like a hand-me-down facility, that felt like it could attract or be a support to attract, um, from a, from a, a economic development point of view and a resident development point of view, and also for existing residents to be proud of this facility, have it be world-class and innovative and accurately represent the aspirations and desires of the community. Lisa? Um, so our interpretation of, of connecting people in place is to use the beautiful site of, of, uh, the Mystic River Bluffs, as it's called now, to connect neighbors, neighborhoods, programs, street life, of course. Right now, the Pratt building is very internally focused, so how can we make that part of the active community, not just for the immediate neighborhood, but for the town, the town at large? That was very important, that this not be seen just as a Mystic River Bluffs project, but as a town-wide project, um, and connecting that to the interior life. So the facility, the takeaway for us would have a strong indoor-outdoor connection. Next. Connect people to each other, um, not only nature, but, but groups around social activities, hangout spaces, um, cafes and gaming are new, we're seeing more and more in recreational facilities, that gaming and other, um, digitally complementary activities to physical, um, uh, recreational activities is, is an innovation that's happening across the country, um, so that the field, facility feels inclusive. Pardon me, Lisa, back one just for a moment. Welcoming and accessible and pedestrian-friendly. Next. Um, innovating around health and, uh, and wellness at all levels, not only for the residents and the participants and the communities, but for our environment and our building and our neighborhoods. And so thinking about this as a touch point or a touchstone for thinking about wellness, not only of the individual, but of the entire community. So the facility design is comprehensive, innovative, green, and could actually tap into very strong sustainable solutions that not only have the health and wellbeing impacts, but actually could reduce operating costs, in, in fact, over the long term. And then the world, a world-class, uh, facility that brings a wow factor that will engage pride in the community, will, uh, attract users, attract and retain new, uh, new residents, um, and for the jobs that are anticipated to be increasing. And, um, carry a level of pride that we heard it would be commensurate to the senior center. Groton is very, very proud of its senior center. There's a lot of discussion about that in the community meeting. So one of the aspirations was to engender that amount of pride within other groups of the community in this facility. So with that, we did a, an existing conditions report of the state of the building as it is right now. Um, Melissa, my colleague, will run through that, um, at this point.
So we conducted a site visit of the facility early on, um, before COVID, and, um, we were able to make some conclusions about the, uh, condition of the building. It's generally been unoccupied and unconditioned for a long period of time, so it is in a general state of disrepair. There, the systems, um, including HVAC, electricity, plumbing, and fire protection are beyond their life expense expectancy, if they're in general original to the, to the construction of the building. Um, so they need full wholesale replacement. Uh, the building envelope, uh, the brick veneer cladding is, um, failing and needs to be completely replaced. Um, obviously, when it's originally, um, constructed, the insulation levels are, are currently inadequate for, um, uh, providing the, the correct level of energy efficiency. Um, interestingly enough, the building feels like a masonry structure, but it had, actually is a steel structure with masonry infill, which makes it a little more, um, easy to reconfigure. Um, the existing facilities, so the restroom, the auditorium, are not accessible to those with disabilities and need, uh, comprehensive renovation. Um, and, uh, very important to note is that the current, um, code occupancy and building construction does not allow for additional square footage without, uh, major renovation and, um, uh, changes to the, to the, to the structure. Um, next slide. So here you can see, um, the existing building plans. Uh, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the building, but just to give you a sense, um, you can see the, um, auditorium on top, uh, and then the major, the major, um, kind of elements are also the natatorium, which is the, the swimming pool, the gymnasium. Um, and then there are a few exercise rooms, um, there's an existing handball court, um, and the existing locker rooms. There is a, uh, mechanical mezzanine on the second level, and there's the balcony for the auditorium. Um, otherwise, there currently isn't, uh, any other second floor space, and in the basement, there are some mechanical rooms. Go to the next slide. So, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just going to highlight by saying, it, it's interesting, when we look at the, at the use of the building now, there are three primary functions, this, the natatorium, the gymnasium, and the auditorium. And so, um, before we get into the challenges and opportunities, based on the survey and the needs of the rec department, we took all of those items together and came up with a, a series of either limitations or challenges to meeting the current or projected recreational needs for the town. And our charge was to try to see how we could modify the building to accommodate the recreational needs that the Parks and Rec Department foresees, and also that the community, um, validated as important to them. And as I mentioned earlier, also, the, um, the building is very interior-focused right now, and so part of our approach was to, to see how we could connect that to the community based on some of the community aspirations that we heard. So, sorry, Melissa, go ahead and run us through.
So the, the initial challenges that we saw for this project, um, one of the major ones is really that the, the building is actually kind of sunk in into, um, a lower area, um, and it's thirteen feet lower than the Mystic River Bluffs development. Um, basically, it's a hillside, so they kind of leveled it out and, and sunk the building into, into a flat area. Um, so that poses challenges for connecting with the community, it poses challenges for providing accessibility to the facility. Um, the next challenge is really that, as you can see in this aerial, the building is very inward-facing, um, and so it doesn't really have this strong connection to the outdoors. There isn't much access or even views to the exterior, and there's not that much daylight. Um, the existing interior, uh, is, you know, it just doesn't have much space for community gathering. There's a lobby that's kind of, it's not very functional, but otherwise, there's really not any spaces for people to gather and connect. And that's one of the, you know, we saw is one of the really strong priorities for the Parks and Recreation Department and the community. Um, and there's also not enough flex program space in the building for the recreation needs for different fitness areas and exercise classes. Um, as we discussed in the existing conditions assessment, the existing facilities are not ADA compliant or accessible to those with disabilities. Um, that is one of the strong priorities of the Parks and Recreation Department, and one thing that differentiates it from other towns is that there's, um, a very strong, um, recreational uh, programming for those with disabilities. Um, so that's, you know, something that. So that's, you know, something that will have to, the building will have to be comprehensively renovated to provide that access. And then one thing we heard a lot in all the comments. Was that the community feels frustrated that the Parks and Recreation Department. Tends to get hand-me-down facilities that are not purpose-built for the function of recreation. So we felt like this renovating this facility, that it was really important that, you know, that it not feel like a hand-me-down facility. And that we not shoehorn program into an existing building. So given those challenges, we thought that some design opportunities are. That the, the building's actually surrounded by amazing nature space. It's got, you know, conservation land all, all around it, basically 75% of the. Of the, of the, you know, exterior of the building is surrounded by wonderful recreation space with the Mystic River beyond. And that since we have to, we have to replace so many of the building envelope and systems, that it's really an opportunity to, to create a state-of-the-art. Energy-efficient, sustainable building. We have the opportunity to really make it. Kind of the, the latest and greatest. And make it, you know, operationally easy to maintain and lower operating costs. And then because it, you know, it's currently not ADA compliant. The renovations that occur can actually provide for full inclusivity for people of all abilities, backgrounds and identities. Really focus on making sure everyone feels welcome and has equal access to facilities in the building. Next slide. So as you look at this survey. The red dash line is, is where we're saying that the level of the Mystic River Bluffs community will be. And, and the, you can, I don't know how you can read, if you can contour maps. But the building is much lower than that. If you go to the next slide, it'll become a little more clear. Next slide. So here's a section, so imagine you slice through the building from one side to the other and you're looking at it straight on. That red dash line of that contour line is shown. At the level of the building and. So in order to have some sort of frontage to the community at that level. What we did was we actually created a second level in the auditorium, in the former auditorium. In order to be able to have a, an entrance that is gracious and fronts onto the, onto the community. For the rest of the community to the street level.
That street level location has also been discussed as having a parking facility, a parking garage as part of the Restler development. That would be used to service the Pratt facility. So there's a direct relationship for those coming in automobiles to this location. We also discussed in the study, the need to consider alternative transportation systems to this location. And so connecting it to a roadway that would be connected to the rest of the roadway of the town would be very valuable. So buses and other modes of transportation could come up here and not have to navigate down that 13 feet to the backside of the building. Where it would be harder for public transportation to access the building ultimately.
So given that. We didn't want to create a hand-me-down facility and there was a lot of need for multipurpose functionality. There was the opportunity to convert the auditorium into something that was more purpose-built for recreational needs. So we were, we're able to remove kind of these appendages on the side of the building that were creating. A stair up to the balcony. And actually straighten the building out and make it actually more, more functional, more multipurpose. Have that space actually open, open up more to the rest of the building instead of being constricted down to kind of a narrow. A narrow connection. And, and yeah, so that's, so really it becomes more multipurpose and more functional. Next slide. So, uh, recupusing the auditorium use solves many architectural challenges and community challenges. One thing it does is it allows connection to the community at the street level. And at that point, it actually is able to provide accessibility for those with disabilities from the street level into the building. Directly into the building instead of having to navigate down a complex series of ramps that take you down 13 feet to the, where the existing entrance of the building is. It allows for a more flexible programmable multipurpose space. And you'll see the conceptual plans later and understand how that works a little more better. Then the also, the, the renovating the auditorium. And into multipurpose space helps break the stigma of the needs for parks and recreation to shoehorn program into a facility originally designed for another purpose. And then an interesting note is that the A1, so the auditorium has a different building use occupancy by code. Than the rest of the recreation facility, which limits the square footage that you're able to use. And when we remove the auditorium. Use group from the building, it allows us to add additional square footage that's sorely needed for creating interior gathering spaces. And a sense of community and that additional. Program, flexible program space. And next slide. So the other big move that we made was relocating that service road farther away from the building. And that allows us to create some exterior program area right next to the gymnasium. So we can actually open directly out to the, to the outdoors and have that, that outdoor program space. Right next to that gymnasium area.
So when it came to internalizing the challenges and opportunities that Melissa just outlined. We developed three conceptual approaches to modifying the Pratt Building. And in the scheme of things, just to kind of lay out where we are. In, when one considers or redesigns a building, there are high-level conceptual diagrams. Then one goes, and that's where decision-making and program trade-offs and values are all evaluated. And then there's the normal design through construction process. So this is a feasibility study, so in the timeline of construction. This is not cast in stone, this has not had contract documents, no contractors looked at it, this is not close to being built, of course. This is just at the feasibility stage. And so we tested different ideas to embody the aspirations of the community, the program, the programmatic needs of parks and recreation. To see how we could maximize parks and recreation programming in this building. So we came up with three diagrams for the building. One was called plazas, which used program areas organized around a series of gathering spaces, both indoor and out. We came up with a concept called Main Street, which organizes an internal central boulevard around which programs are organized. And allows for viewing down into those large volumes such as the pool and the gymnasium from above. And at the same time, provide social spaces. And then pathway, which was. The idea of an indoor walking track or some circulation element that was elevated, that connected all the program spaces and also. Allowed for a more two, three-dimensional experience of the building and connecting to the activities in the building. So this is a quick summary of those, of these options. These options were presented to the Parks and Rec Department and Economic Development and review. They were also presented to Restler for input from their point of view about how, how this would support. Or could be complimentary to their development around the site. And the feedback led us to create one integrated or mashup scheme. That was based loosely on the Main Street option, but with elements from the Plaza option. Go ahead, Lisa, thank you. So if you look on the left-hand side of the screen, this is the upper level. Right now, there's really no upper level to the Pratt Building at all. As Melissa's been mentioning, we go down 13 feet to the ground floor level and enter the building there. And all of the volume of the building is up above overhead. So we wanted to take advantage of some of that large volume to create more program, flexible program spaces. Office and staff spaces for Parks and Rec. And to create the opportunity to overlook the large gymnasium and pool areas. So, so people could participate as observers as well as participants in the recreational programming. So on the left-hand side, Lisa, if you'll just run the cursor, you can see there's a roadway planned at the top of the drawing. Across from this roadway, right now, conceptually, Restler is planning for a garage. That would support their facility and support functions in the Pratt Facility. Just as a side note, in addition to allowing more program space to be added to the building without fireproofing the structure, adding sprinkler systems or other things. Removal of the assembly space from this building reduces the parking requirement significantly for, for the space. Because you can imagine there wouldn't be surge parking requirements. But the roadway is along, the proposed roadway is along the top. It provides for drop-off for public transportation or private transportation or, or others to enter at the, at the upper level there through a lobby. There's also a corner plaza that's proposed that steps down and can become an outdoor performance area. An outdoor theater, outdoor hangout space. It's also on the corner that connects adjacent to the public center of the Restler development. So there's a community urban design component to that element. Once in the building, there's an entry lobby and reception. There's a multipurpose flex space on the ground floor on the upper level there that's meant to be a community-facing public space that can be used by public groups. And, or for more public functions that aren't directly programmed as recreational facilities, but can be more community-wide. The staff is up on that level. And then you, one crosses down further into the plan and there's an elevator that services then all the levels. Because there's no elevator in the building now, as we mentioned. And then one would step up a few steps to the Main Street, what we call the Main Street connection. That yellow area in the center there provides overlook into the pool. So parents who are there watching children at swim lessons or teams watching other teams play in the gymnasium, sports games. There's some interaction that also areas, that area is also large enough for gaming and other small-scale community activities as well as hanging out. And then as one proceeds down the plan to the end of Main Street. We're taking advantage of some existing roof area to create outdoor roof terrace for recreational use, outdoor classes when the weather permits. Or functions and activities there. On the right-hand side of the sheet, you can see the lower level. So one would get to the lower level either through two of the main public stairs back near the staff area and the main lobby area. The top, near the entry or at the end of the Main Street at the bottom. And come down into a central, the, the lower portion of the Main Street. Where the, at the top of the screen now, there says flex programming, there's one large footprint area that can be divided for. Any different number of recreational programming classes that connects to an exterior lawn, again, for interior, exterior functioning. From, from a recreational programming point of view. There's fitness and cardio classes that are adjacent to the aquatics pool. The pool has been divided into two sections, one half. For a zero entry where you see that kind of diagonal shape, that's a ramped entry into a zero-entry warm temperature pool. For different types of exercising, the stout, the lower part of the pool is still set up for laps and other swimming activities. There'll be a gender-inclusive rec room and gender-inclusive. Restrooms throughout the facility. Flex weight and fitness areas down at the bottom off of Main Street. You can see additional flex programming spaces below the gymnasium in this plan. And then the gymnasium itself is refurbished for a smaller court. It's, it's more half-court size courts here. And then there's proposed to be some overhead doors that can roll open or into an exterior fitness lawn area. So some of those activities can flex from inside to out again as weather allows. And then up at the top of the right, sorry, just went full clockwise there. There's an, the lower level of the exterior plaza, so the outdoor performance space or the outdoor stepping plaza steps down. As, as a terrace area into the exterior plaza. So the back of the gym storage and the other areas could be used for projecting outdoor movies or other, other public functions. And here's just a side-by-side image of the existing shape of the building, the existing upper level plan and the proposed upper level plan. If it's proposed for recreational facilities. So where we are in the process of our study now, there are basically three components of our study. The first was the community assessment with a statistically valid survey. That community assessment, as Lisa mentioned in the beginning, took an overview at the needs of the entire Town of Groton Parks and Recreation Department. As a segment of that, certain of those questions were directed to what, which uses would be most appropriate in the Pratt Facility. That was merged with the expertise at the Parks and Recs Department about what they, they know that their challenges are with programming. And then our charge was to develop a feasibility concept option as we've presented here to you tonight. And that would be developed with a budget. So we're in the process of, of getting ready to finalize a proposed feasibility level budget for this project. Once that budget is proposed. We'll know what the facility renovations would cost as it's, what would it cost as it's imagined here. And then green play at the end is, is the last bit of scope is to actually look at the operational costs of the facility as it's conceptualized. At this point in time for recreational use. So we're just past the point where we have the concept designs and we have just a little bit of work to go at this point to reimagine this as a, as a maximized recreational facility. Lisa?
Thank you, Laura. I believe that's our overall presentation of where we are in the process. And certainly, you know, as Laura had mentioned, we are in the operational phase of taking a hard look at what the costs would be. Pricing and then staffing operations based on what the programming opportunities would be. I guess at this point, we would open it up for any type of questions or confirmation to what has been done so far.
So I'd like to give Mr. Berry the opportunity to speak again before we take any more questions, if he wanted to add anything. Or if Mr. Burt wanted to speak before we throw it open for council comment. Do either of you gentlemen wish to speak?
Sure, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. I think the, the proposal that, that Perry has put together based on the. Community needs or the, the whole community engagement process best meets the needs of the community. And I think it creates, as Laura said in her part of the presentation, it creates a space that people will be excited about. People will be excited to come to and stay. And I, I think from an economic development perspective, you know, this building reaches beyond just what Restler is planning. And I think it will really set Groton apart from other communities. Moving forward. And, and I think it will allow us to compete with some of the other communities as, as, you know, electric boat continues to ramp up. And we're, we are competing with other communities for those. For those folks that are coming to this area. And I think this would, would set Groton ahead of a lot of other communities.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Reiner, I apologize. Did you wish to speak this evening on this issue as well, sir?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. I just wanted kind of to make one comment, just kind of bringing it back. Full circle to, you know, all of these items that we're talking about here, improvements of the Pratt Building are all dependent upon. The Mystic Education Center development moving forward in some shape or form of what's being proposed right now. in some shape or form of what's being proposed right now. Because the way that, you know, kind of the $10 million to $20 million question here is how do we pay for all of this? And as we are looking at a lot of these options, it's looking at the cost of things and making sure that we're building something that we can afford, because the improvements to this building, and I don't want to get too deep into a discussion on TIF, I think that's something we can talk about in detail at another night, but it is future tax dollars from the Mystic Education Center development that are going to be paying for the improvements to this building and other improvements on the site. So I just want to just bring that around for people to keep in the back of their minds. I think, you know, again, the main focus is tonight is on the Pratt Building, the future use of the Pratt Building, and the partnership that we have with the folks at Restler Homes, Parks and Rec, the town, moving forward for the development of this, for the community as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Burt, did you wish to speak?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I was wondering if we could stop the screen share so that it's easier to view the counselors, and there we go. Thank you so much. So we can open it up for council questions at this point. Counsel O'Gree?
I want to thank you for a very nice presentation. Obviously, you all know what you're doing. I'm just wondering, if you had known that there's such a desire to have a arts portion of this, would you have been able to do your survey a little differently?
Um, I mean, I think some of those questions were included in the survey. You know, we based the survey on the input of the town folks and staff and the committee that was, we put together to formulate that. So, I mean, I believe the answer would be, I feel that the survey is certainly representative of what the recreational needs assessment was striving to do, with the focus somewhat on the Pratt Facility as well. So the overall focus was the recreational needs assessment and what the town needed.
Okay. I'm a little drawn to this because I want a theater. And so what bothers me is in the survey, I went back and got your original survey, I had not ever seen it. And in the survey, it kept saying auditorium. It didn't never, it never said theater. And I think had it said theater, you would have had a different response. I want the recreational amenities that are here, and I want the Rec Department to feel like we know they're important. We don't want them to be second-class citizens. But we have a whole community that's desperate for arts. Groton has nothing. The surrounding towns, they all have something, and we have nothing. And so I don't know where it goes from now, you know, with your different specialties, but I just think it has to, one, it has to start being called the theater. In your presentation tonight, you've not said theater. You keep saying auditorium. We have auditoriums all over town. So that's not going to excite anybody. But when you say theater, you heard the people tonight, I think maybe you heard the people that spoke earlier, I don't know whether you did or not. And you can see that there is a need in this town. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can come together with some kind of a plan that can incorporate the arts as well as the recreation, and still be aware of the feelings of our recreation department. Personally, I don't think anybody's going to really do basketball games up there, because we have a lot of basketball places in town. I think every school has a basketball court. So to me, a half-court would be the greatest thing in the world. That's how, that's how small groups play basketball. They don't run up and down the whole thing. They do a half-court game. So I think there's a compromise here, and I hope the Rec Department and the other people involved will look at our finding a way to work out that compromise and have a theater, which is so desperately needed. And in my meeting with the representative of the developer, they really want the theater. They may not have said that to you, but I asked them what they thought about it, and they said they really want the theater, because it'll add to what they're offering. And there's also a movie theater in there. I don't know if you knew that or not, but there's a screen that comes down in front of the stage from the ceiling, and you can, you know, have a wonderful opportunity to do evening movies for the people that live there, or afternoon movies, or whatever it might be. So I think we're missing an opportunity, and I hope maybe you can find a way to incorporate that and maybe find a way to guide us to find a compromise. And thank you so much for your talents. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel O'Gree. I have a process question for the manager, for Mr. Berry, regarding where we are with all of this, and this may help the rest of the council as well. Are you looking, two things, are you looking for direction from us this evening as to whether we are supportive of what was presented? And the second question is if, and I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I echo much of what Counsel O'Gree said, and I support the speakers we had earlier this evening in wishing to keep the theater in place at the Pratt Building. If the council, majority of the council consensus was that we wanted to keep that theater, where do we go from here? So really, two questions, and perhaps Tom Staff should ask, answer first, Mr. Burt, and then maybe Mr. Berry. How do we proceed with this? Again, I cannot speak for the full council, but that's my questions.
Well, in terms of timing, you know, we don't, well, a decision will have to be made soon, because, you know, Restler, the developer, you know, we have a lot negotiating to do, and this is a key part of it that has to be, we have to have direction before we can continue on. So we'll need a direction pretty fast here. Mark's more familiar with the contract, though, with the consultants, so I'll let him or the consultants answer what's, is there time available in the contract to look at other options, or what we have available?
Before you go, before you yield the floor over, when you're saying pretty quickly, can you give me some sense of, how quickly are you talking? Are you talking weeks, months? What kind of time do we have to make up our minds?
Mr. Reiner could probably answer that better, since he has a weekly call with Mr. Restler.
Thank you.
So, John Reiner, I think this is something, you know, I could talk with the Restler team, but I think over the course of the next few months, we really want to get some direction, the sooner the better, because it's not only the direction that Restler needs, but, you know, one of the other things that we really need to weigh in this is there's very different cost options between utilizing a theater space in the building versus other spaces in the building. And then there's also differences in the parking needs. And, you know, people might think, oh, okay, well, it's just parking, but really, the parking for this facility is going to be structured parking. And each one of those structured parking spaces costs somewhere in the ballpark of about $20,000 each. So if we're talking about eliminating 100, 200, you know, or, you know, type of parking spaces, and I don't have those exact numbers, and that's something that we need to work towards. So if the council is a group, says, you know, we really want to move towards a theater at this space, I would ask that you let us do a little bit more homework to, so we can do some cost comparisons, because if we're talking millions of dollars in differences between a theater versus the other type of design, that's something I want to make sure you all have that level of information before you make that choice.
And did Mr. Berry want to speak to the questions I had regarding process?
Absolutely. So the agreement that the town reached with the consultants does not allow for any more, does not allow us to take a step back and reconceptualize and go through the feasibility process again, and looking at costing. So at this point, I think we're going to have to move forward with the conceptual design that's been presented and run those numbers. And, you know, if, I guess if the council feels that, you know, this is absolutely the direction that we have to go in, then, you know, we won't have a complete set of numbers unless we renegotiate the agreement with both Perry and Green Play to go back and look at, you know, a building that would look considerably different. You know, one thing to remember is the fact that if the auditorium theater space, you know, if that space stays, that not only impacts how we operate in that space, but that trickles down to other parts of the building. So when they showed that conceptual design, there was staffing space in that area. Now we have to, if that no longer is available, now we have to move that staffing space someplace else. And the entire front of the building needs to be reconfigured to address the fact that there's a 13 or 14-foot difference between, you know, street level and the entrance. And somehow that will have to be addressed. And, you know, I don't think that's going to be as simple as putting in 700 yards of sidewalk at a slope that meets, you know, that meets ADA requirements. And while I have the floor, I do want to point out that there is a, an existing space that is geographically in the center of Groton that has been unused for the last couple of years. And I'm talking about the auditorium/theater space in the Groton Community Center. So there is an opportunity that does exist for another space. And, you know, we have figures from Public Works on the cost to get that open, and those have been in the CIP for the last few years.
Thank you. I'm just seeing if anybody else from staff wanted to speak, and if not, we have other counselors who have questions. Counsel Boardaline, you have the floor.
Thank you. It just seems to me that, I don't know, maybe we started off on the wrong foot. I mean, I feel as if the three lovely women tonight that presented took the direction of the survey and the direction of our recreation staff to come up with a conceptual plan and idea, which I think they did a really lovely job based on the data and the direction they were given. So I just want to make that very clear, that it seems that that's what they did, and they produced an end product that was, is a wonderful job based on what was given to them. So I just want to compliment you guys on that. But it seems as if, me knowing the building since I was a child and used to go swimming there myself, it's a no-brainer that that auditorium has been there for a long time. So I guess to me, first, this building, we're not going to own, is that correct, John? It's going to be a leased building eventually in the end? Is that the correct, we're going to be leasing it?
Yeah, it'll be their owned, and we would lease it and operate.
Right. So we're talking about a building that we're not going to own, that the company's going to come in, and we're going to have some type of lease agreement that's yet been determined. So we knew the auditorium was in there, and so somewhere, I feel as if we maybe, the communication didn't occur where maybe the right people were brought on board to discuss the direction of the surveys and the needs assessment, or what our own rec staff thought the needs were based on the facility. And somehow, you know, the auditorium wasn't necessarily encompassed in that, but that auditorium has been there from the beginning. Understanding, I'm sorry?
Theater.
Theater, auditorium, it depends on. My understanding is, I didn't even know the direction would be that we'd remove it at all. I thought the existing affiliate would be enhanced, and the quality of that theater/theaterium/pool were kind of the big highlights, and those were going to stay. So I kind of almost feel bad where we're at right now, in the sense that I feel, here we are, all this work's been done, and I feel like we should have been brought in possibly sooner to when the plans and the direction were going to state that an auditorium was going to be kind of out of the conceptual plan and drawing, versus allowing the drawing to go to the length that it did. So that's a little frustrating from my end, with no disrespect, just looking at how things in my own job get to a point, this would be very frustrating as a presentation to put a lot of work in and then say, oh, by the way, I want the auditorium. Well, we all knew the auditorium was there. So I'm in full support of having an auditorium. I did see the survey myself, and I didn't feel that the questions were necessarily directed towards the idea of arts and culture, per se. But once again, if the Rec Department really doesn't have that type of intentions or thought process, well, then that's not going to be encompassed in the needs assessment of what they would want. So I could see where, how we ended at this level. So I guess I have a couple of questions. I mean, I guess one to Mark Berry, do you feel we need an arts program?
You know, I'm certainly supportive of arts, and that's one of the reasons that I have proposed in the CIP for the last couple of years, money to be set aside to make the improvements to the auditorium theater in the Groton Community Center. And, you know, there's been other higher priorities. And so I think this, my support of the arts has certainly been there, and that continues.
Right. So I guess the concerns I have is the Restler building is a great thing, the company is wonderful, wonderful what they're going to do, they're going to pay to do this building, they're bringing in economic development, they're bringing in a whole complex, only help Groton, we're going to have a lease agreement for the Pratt Building, but we have a, we have our own, like, slowly piecemealing-together community center that needs a ton of repair that we haven't done a heck of a lot with. I mean, it was a former school that was shut down, then they renovated and put a ton of money into the roof, and now we've been, we finally got palpable, drinkable water there that had lead in it. I just feel like we're all over the map. And so it concerns me that here we are again, kind of standing here and not sure which direction, and that's no fault of anyone in particular. It just seems that this is sometimes how our projects end up, and I'm concerned for that. And long-term, depending on what this lease agreement looks like for the Pratt Building, we technically might not have exclusive use of this. I mean, we could have a pipe dream and design all of this, but in 20 or 30 years, if this company pulls out and another company comes in, you know, what protections are going to be in place for this auditorium/theater/pool that everyone's so excited about and so welcoming? Because we're not, we will not own the building. So I guess, I almost feel like we should be focused more on our own community center for some of these things. And, I don't know, I'm just, I'm a little perplexed here, I guess. I'm a little left, like, wondering what's going on. And in future, I feel as if we should have been brought into the concept maybe a little bit sooner, when the design was going down of eliminating certain things. And that didn't really come until the presentation side. And so for that, I want to apologize to the women that presented tonight, because I feel a little bit frustrated by it. So not towards you, but just by the content, in the sense that I feel the concept might have been gone too far down before it should have been presented to us maybe a little bit sooner.
Thank you, Counsel Boardaline. I'm sorry, we are operating under the new rules, and that's been six minutes, including a minute for Mr. Berry.
You never gave me a chance to wrap up.
We need to go on to the next counselor, if there is someone else who wishes to speak, and if not, we can circle back.
If you want to be rude, I'm just going to say thank you again. She didn't give me a chance, a warning to close, but thank you for putting what you're doing. And I do appreciate getting to where you guys.
Counsel Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, it just went really quiet for some reason. So thank you for the great design. I found some very lovely things in there, a lot of great features, and I'm excited about it. I do have a few questions, so I'm going to have to be quick, because I only have three minutes to talk, so. minutes to talk. So what is a gender inclusive restroom?
So gender inclusive locker room just means there's not a male and a female locker room, that the locker room is designed such that it can be used by any gender, non-gender specific people who identify, not binary. There are gender independent restrooms, so they're gender neutral restrooms, meaning they're not set up as women's restrooms or men's restrooms, but all the restrooms are independent restroom rooms compartments that are individual.
Okay, understood. And they're going to be large enough, like you could undress your family in there, right? And your children, though, for swimming. Okay. And then, will there be bleachers in the gymnasium? Because I'm wondering, is this just like a conceptual rendering? Or is this like the footprint that you think is going to happen? That's what I'm wondering.
The renovations to the main spaces have to do, the gymnasium is being refurbished as it is right now. So the equipment that's in there right now, the only change that we're making to it is connecting it to the outdoors for flex indoor outdoor space and adding more appropriate gymnasium storage to the gymnasium. The storage is lacking in the gym right now. To an earlier comment, it is a half sized court, so it is appropriate kind of for recreational scale activities. It's not a full size court. The largest renovation to the existing large rooms is really in this, in the pool area than auditorium, because we're dividing the pool in half to accommodate the different needs. Universal needs are people of different levels and abilities, and still maintain some recreational lap swimming in there.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question for John Burt. So I, when it was mentioned by Mr. Berry that, I'm questioning, why are we just now involved in this? And that it's too late to basically reconceptualize? Like, if there's no other option, what do, there's nothing to approve. I mean, there's no other option then. Then why are we, why are we coming in now? And why weren't we involved sooner, maybe?
When the council approved the funding for, for the projects, it was laid out by Mr. Berry and I believe Mr. Reiner, how the process would work and that everything would be based on that input from the public. So that's which direction they took. I hadn't seen the concept plan to or the drawings to recently either. But and I've always assumed that, yeah, we'd do some conceptual drawings, but then it would be looked at if you wanted any changes.
Yeah, that's what sort of I was thinking. Because I mean, if we're now at a place now that there's, you, we can't go back is what we were told. I mean, I, I'm just sort of a little stunned, I guess, at the moment.
So this is John Reiner, if I can make one comment, to kind of follow up a little bit on what John Burt was saying. The original concept, sorry, contract, had some base designs established within the contract for Perry and Green Play. And based off of the townwide community analysis, they had taken that information and put some of those together. Maybe what, you know, as we're looking back, you know, hindsight is always 2020, no pun intended there. I think maybe something that we could or should have done, and we didn't really know how the community survey was going to come out, was if we had set aside more money in the original contract, we could have had multiple options and multiple cost scenarios come out. So I think, right now, the pickle just is, it's not recreating the wheel. If the council says, hey, you know, we really want you to go back, look at some redesigns based on utilizing that space as an auditorium. And frankly, if in order to look at that, as I said early, we probably should be weighing out both of those options in front of you, the council and cost option. So, you know, the horse isn't so far out of the barn that the project's done and we're coming to you and saying, hey, here's our recommendation. We actually felt that this was a good point, based on a community survey, which was, again, not specifically focused on the Pratt Building. And maybe that's where some of the disconnect has happened here. Because I, you know, I've heard a few council members say, well, there's an auditorium slash theater in that building right now. So we just kind of thought there would always be one. Whereas the community survey was asking, what are the needs of the community? So we were trying to adapt community space into this building. And I think that's why it went in that direction of not utilizing that theater space anymore. So I think if after tonight, if there's a consensus of the council or that, hey, we really got to look at this option of theater, which is something I think I'm hearing, we can look at the theater in this building. We could talk to Perry Green Play about a contract amendment, what that would cost. And it's probably also having, worth having the conversation about the theater options, comparing cost, size, and other things within Fitch Middle School, or the community center now, so that just options are put on the table of what are all the costs for each of these options? And then what's the best place? And I think taking a more programmatic look at all of it.
Okay, thank you. And while I have you, Mr. Reiner, you mentioned that TIF was going to be in play, and that the taxpayers are paying for the renovations of this building.
No.
That is not, that's what you had just recently said. And it's, I wrote it down because it sort of surprised me when you said that. So I wanted to come back to that.
Sure. And I think that is a conversation for much more in depth at a later state. But one of the things we've often talked about with this project is that the Mystic Education Center redevelopment project was not a reality without a major tax income and financing component to it. And when you look at what TIF is, and I know I've said this publicly, we haven't gotten into the discussions, the negotiations, or anything like that with Restler about the specifics of TIF and how it's all going to be worked out. But they need, this is going to end up being a public resource. So Counselor Bordelone earlier had mentioned, you know, well, how long is the lease? Well, we haven't negotiated any of those items yet. And we're going down a little bit of a rabbit hole. But it's been envisioned in some of the just preliminary discussions that we've often talked about is that there would be probably a 30 year lease to the town for this building. We would be responsible for maintenance, we would be responsible for upkeep. And at the end of that term, we can work with Restler, whether we want to buy the building from them, whether we want to continue on a lease. So this is really going to be a major public amenity at the site. And it's going to be something that's going to be open for all Groton residents. It's a big component, and tax income and financing is needed as part of the project.
I fully understand everything you're saying. But the comment you had made was TIF is in play and taxpayers are paying for the renovations of this building. I wrote down exactly what you said.
Well, correct.
So how are the?
Quiet of order, counselors exceeded the three minute limit by a long shot.
I'm trying to take exception of the responses to the questions when I'm calculating this. But we are running down, and we do have other people that wish to speak. So.
The rules say I can, I can speak for three minutes.
And you're very close to three, Counselor Franco.
Yeah.
You started at, you started at 9:01, and it is now 9:10. And I've had about three minutes.
The rules do not say it's time to ask a question.
Excuse me, I know, I understand. And I'm trying to tell you that I have had, I've been timing this, and Mr. Reiner has spoken for approximately four minutes, and the other ones have been about a minute. So that takes us to five, and you started at 9:01. So it's about time to go on to the other counselors. We can circle back, though, for the second round of questioning.
Okay, so then the respondents need to answer quickly, is what you're saying, I ask a question. Is that how it's going to be?
I'm allotting that time separate from your time. Okay, so we will, we will go on to Counselors Zepari, Bumgartner, and then we will take any other counselors who wish to speak first time. And the rules say we can circle back. Counselor Obree, I can add you to the list, but Counselors Zepari and Bumgartner have been waiting?
No, she needs an answer to that question.
To what question?
She's asking him if we're going to pay for that building. It needs to be very clear that we are not. And that needs to be clear. Please let her finish.
Mr. Reiner finish his comment.
He did not.
No, Counselor Obree, you didn't hear me. I said, we will let Mr. Reiner finish his comment. And we have to move to other counselors' questions.
Agreed.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner, if you would please answer Counselor Franco's question, and then we have to go on to Counselors Zepari and Bumgartner. Thank you.
Sure. So Restler is going to be a taxpayer for this. So the way that tax income and financing works, to be very, very brief, is when they build this project, we will be getting tax dollars from Restler. Those dollars, a portion of those dollars will end up going back to Restler as part of a credit enhancement agreement that you, the council, have to approve, gets run through the budget, it gets approved by many, many people at the local level. So in that instance, it is a reimbursement of tax dollars that Restler has paid as part of this project that will pay for the improvement to the Pratt Building. If we have a lot more questions about TIF, I'm happy to talk about this at a future council meeting. This is something that we actually have to get into sometime in the very near future.
Correct.
We've been doing some work on it. And I think we could talk about TIF for this project for hours.
Yes, and we may end up doing that. But right now, we need to go to the other counselors' questions, and then counselors have a second time around, and we may revisit this. So if you could please stand by for more questions on that. Right now, we are going to Counselors Zepari, Bumgartner, and then Heed.
I'd like to thank the presenters at this session for their, their studies and their efforts in this. I think there is a general consensus among the council, and we can test this by a vote if you like at some point, but there's a general consensus among the council that we would prefer to see the theater reserved in some fashion, so that the folks that spoke before the meeting will have place, a place for them to do their own presentations, and many others. I, I, when I was training in orthopedic surgery, I was taught to measure, measure twice and cut walks. And so far, so far, there have been no bulldozers on this site, and nobody laying down water, or tearing down walls, or ripping out seats. I think we should go back and look at it again and get it, get the costs and the differences in the, in the production on two plans. One, the plan that's been presented to us, and the other, a plan to preserve the theater. And I, you know, from the discussion that we've had, I think that's pretty, pretty apparent, that that's what most of us would like to see. I don't think we want to go hell bent for leather into expending a great deal more of the taxpayers' money than we have to. But on the other hand, I think that there is a strong desire within the council, and I think it has not been appreciated in the surveys that have been done in the, in the public, that we would like to support the performing arts, and we'd like to have places for them. So that's, I'm proposing that we, we go back and look at this with a notion of preserving the theater.
Thank you, Counselors Zepari. We are on to Counselor Bumgartner, and then Heed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and certainly agree with Counselors Zepari. Thank you so much for taking, you know, really doing your due diligence to identify what the needs are here in town. And, you know, after reading the survey results, it was very interesting to see how people responded. And obviously, you know, what, just seeing what they would like to see for our community. I did learn that the, that a natatorium is another word for aquatic center. So you certainly learn something new every day. But one question I have is with respect to the flex space, kind of what, what would make the proposed flex space within the Pratt Building any different than, say, flex space in a school building or another municipal space that also may function as a community space in in the town currently?
I think the, the difference in the, in the flex space is we're talking about our aspiration and our, in our vision is a world-class facility, not shoehorning us into a 70 year old building that was not designed for its current use. And sure, can we, you know, put a dance class in a, in a drafty, poorly lit room? I mean, if that's, if, if that is how we want to continue to serve the community, then we'll continue to operate that way. But that's certainly not the vision of our department. And, you know, having flex space in this building allows us to meet the needs that came out of the survey, that people would like more programming. And we'd love to be able to offer more programming. But, you know, when we rely on spaces that we have no control over, that makes it very difficult for us to successfully run programs. And so the, having that, again, having that space in the Pratt Building would allow us to meet what the community is saying they want. And, you know, I want to remind everybody that the, the conceptual plans that Prairie did are based on a statistically valid community needs assessment. And, and that's why they went in the direction they did. And quite honestly, you know, the, the, there was very little interest in an auditorium slash theater. And, you know, it's only become aware to us in the last few weeks that the council, members of the council were strongly interested in preserving the auditorium. You know, that was not anything that was brought to, I don't believe was brought to the attention during the focus group, or the stakeholder groups of which council members participated. So, you know, I think that is one of the reasons we are where we are right now.
Thank you, Mark. And I do think you bring up a good point in that, you know, in the case, the, you know, if, if we were to move forward with this proposed plan, perhaps, how does the community survey inform future decisions relating to recreational programming in the future? So, for example, I know in the community survey, there is an interest in splash pads. There obviously is an interest in, you know, auditorium space. And as you mentioned, there is an existing auditorium space in, you know, at Fitch, Fitch Middle School, or now the community center. So I guess, what are the next steps kind of to this process with this community survey? And, and kind of outside of the Pratt Building, how will the, will the community survey inform other, or future decision making and other recreational programming, and as well as future decisions relating to, you know, renovations and renovations of existing town spaces?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. The, the results from the, the community needs assessment, you will see, you know, as we lay out a plan over the next few years, what proposals to address what people have identified as what they want to see in the community. That will be kind of the foundation of department proposals and initiatives over the next few years.
Great. And I have exhausted my three minutes, so I will yield the floor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bumgartner. Okay, so we are on to Counselor Heed, and then I wish to speak.
Sure. Let's see, I'm muted, so good to go. Thank you very much for the presentation. I felt like I was. Thank you very much for the presentation. I felt like I was walking through the building as you were describing it. So, you know, very good job. I really enjoyed, or enjoyed. I think you made the case for having a street-level entrance, which went through the current auditorium theater. Whether or not I support that is another question. I think, you know, there's possibility you could go, or we could build like a separate entrance. But that second level between the pool and the gym, I felt like I was right there looking down at the kids swimming and, you know, the people in the gym. That sounds really beautiful. And the use of what is, what has been unused space, you know, I completely appreciate your efforts on that. But I would like to, I guess, direct this towards, I don't know, town staff. If we're talking about doing a possible theater as an alternative at the Fitch Middle School, which is obviously, you know, it was designed as a middle school theater for smaller bodies. You know, what would be the cost of putting a theater in there versus keeping it where it is? What's the cost of the parking at the Pratt Building versus are there enough parking spots at the Fitch Middle School? If we're going to do a cost comparison, I think that has to be part of it. But other than that, I very much enjoyed the presentation and want to thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Counselor Hede, did you want them to try to answer that tonight? I don't know if they have those numbers.
No, those aren't questions I think they can answer tonight. I think that's for the future.
Okay, very good. So it is 9:23. And I just wanted to express my support for keeping the theater at the Pratt Building. Back in pre-pandemic times, I had spoken to Mr. Waller and Ms. Barry, and we were supposed to have a tour with the representatives from Ressler with the goal of exploring how that space could be kept as art space. So this has been something that I have had in mind for quite a while, and I would really like to see it go forward if that's the will of the council. I'm not sure what the will of the council is tonight. I'm not sure if we are ready to give direction tonight. But what I would like to do is that we have certain counselors that haven't spoken yet. I would like to throw the floor to them if they choose to speak. And if not, we can circle back for our second round of questions. So at this point, let's see, I believe, I have to look at my notes. Counselor Melendez, did you wish to speak on this item, sir?
Yeah, I'll just speak briefly. Thank you for all the work that has gone into this plan. I think if I personally, you know, made the decision, I think I would prefer also to have a theater there. But I do think there is something to be said about the fact that they went out, did a survey, and they decided from that survey that a flex space would meet more of the needs there, as well as our own Parks and Rec staff feeling that that is the best use for that space. So I'm not saying that I support either way. I do not know yet. But, yeah, I just want to thank you for the time and effort. And hopefully, you know, when we're done with this, everyone will feel like they have their proper say in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melendez. Okay, I'm going to go back through, and I'm going to try to do it in the same order. So we are on our second round of three minutes. And I have Counselor Aubrey started. So Counselor Aubrey, did you wish to speak again?
Yes, just briefly. I think part of our investigation from this point on, there are two things that have to be really done. We have to have a real honest conversation with John about what he's saying about the impact of what's going on up there, because I'm very confused at this point. Because I was told directly by a representative of the developer that the cost was going to be theirs. And if the cost is not going to be there, we shouldn't even be talking about the building. So we need to get some real clarification on that. The other thing is, I think that's being overlooked, is the fact that the theater can very easily be a profit center for the recreation department to pay for other activities, especially where most of our activities now have a cost, and we've said that it's kept some children from being able to participate. So we need to put that into it, you know, what would be the return on a theater? But the biggest question is, this was brought to us as the fact that this developer was going to do this building over. We would tell them what we thought was important and et cetera, and we certainly have that information, although I feel it needs to be modified. But we need to get a real clear understanding of what we're talking about here, because this town cannot afford to do that building.
There is a misunderstanding on that. John has a more fully fleshed-out answer, if you want to give him a moment when you're done.
Just, I want to make sure Counselor Aubrey's done with her questioning, and then we could throw it to staff. Counselor Aubrey, are you finished with your question?
Well, I guess I just want to reiterate, look at this as a possible cost, you know, a place where we could actually make some money. If we had money to spend, we would have done the other theater over, or whatever you want to call it, at the Fitch. And we didn't. So we don't have money for this building. So I will appreciate John's clarification, but I think we have some really serious questions here that have to be very, very clearly answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Aubrey. Mr. Burt, you said Mr. Reiner wishes to speak right now and address this question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, John Reiner, very, very much apologize for creating some confusion around this. So this, any improvements, right now, the current plan, if any improvements to the Pratt Building will be paid for by the developer upfront. They'll pay for it. They will do the improvements to the building, period. As part of that, through tax increment financing, tax dollars that they pay for this property as it is redeveloped and taxes are coming in through a credit enhancement agreement, we will end up refunding a portion of the taxes that Ressler pays. So again, Ressler pays taxes, and then through TIF, we return a portion of those taxes that Ressler paid to help pay for the Pratt Building and other infrastructure improvements at the Mystic Education Site. So, sorry, I use the word taxpayer because they are a taxpayer as part of this, and it is taxes. But I feel like I stepped on a landmine there and created some confusion. Everything that we've settled all along is that this will happen as part of their build-out of the project.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes, and then I wanted to ask a clarifying question also. Go ahead, Counselor Aubrey.
Okay. We would be doing that anyway with this developer, like we have with others.
Right.
You know, we're actually getting a benefit out of it. But even if they didn't do it, they'd be asking for the same thing, correct?
Well, we've never given out TIF before. We have, in a few occasions, given tax breaks or tax incentives to people and/or some of the, like, Economic Development Assistance Fund things. But correct, in this instance, they're building a public recreational resource for the residents at large within the town, and that's what the TIF will help finance.
And we didn't do any TIF on William Sealy?
Nope. We gave them a short-term tax agreement during the construction.
I guess we need a craft. Okay.
So that was my clarifying point as well. So now we are on to the second round for Counselor Bordelain, if you wish to speak.
Thank you. I still think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I still think that communication in such a fine project should come a lot sooner as a lesson moving forward, that, you know, we should be brought in the loop much sooner than what we are. And I think that a lot of this could be avoided. So also, the survey, you can't force people to take the survey, and I know 700 people roughly took the survey. That's only 1.75% of the population. So to make a whole plan off of 1.75% of the town's population is kind of really, really sinking a lot for the remaining percent, which is huge. I mean, we're looking at less than 2% of the population took the survey. So, I don't know, I still feel, and then, yes, the TIF money, but we're still leasing the building. There's no plan yet to purchase the building as of yet. The plan is of a lease concept. So, of course, they're going to pay for it. They own the building, and we're going to use our TIF, you know, whatever, to help enhance. But we don't have the title of this building. It's a lease. So, I don't know, I feel, I feel like I gained a lot from the presentation, and I think it was nicely done. But I feel like there's still a lot of unanswered questions. And the process and the rollout in the future, I feel the council should be brought in much sooner than we were. Thank you.
This is John. Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Only if I can respond. Just to point out that the council did authorize doing the survey and then doing the conceptual plan based on that survey. That survey draft went to, for one thing, I guess, the Parks and Rec Commission and others for input beforehand. I don't know if it went to the council. However, that's why we also had the public input meetings that the council members were invited to provide input. So I do think ample input opportunities were provided. I don't want, you know, miscommunication certainly, but no one to blame.
Well, I don't think it was a blaming. It's simply that nowhere were we brought in saying that the plan or the direction was to take down the theater. And I never, so even going to those meetings, we wouldn't have gained that. So that was never brought to us. So, thank you.
Okay, we are on to second round for Counselor Franco, if you wish to speak.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselors Zepary, this is your second round. Do you wish to speak, sir?
I've said all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Bum Gardner, do you wish to speak again?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hede, do you wish to speak again? And then Counselor Melendez.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we've gone through twice, and people have passed on their turn to speak. So at this point, is there any consensus direction that you wish to offer town staff? Or do you wish to bring this? I'm not even sure how to handle this, Mr. Burt.
Would you like us to get a price, what it would cost to have a second conceptual plan that could be used for comparison?
So, and I think we need to also, though, address Counselor Hede's questions that he raised regarding the community center, right? So, one minute, please. So if you're going to do that, Mr. Burt, we also need to bring in those other numbers as well. So is it the will of the council that Mr. Burt and his staff go after those numbers for us? Is there, how many would like that? One, two, three, four, five? Okay. So we have a consensus of the council. Mr. Burt, is it clear what we're asking for?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now I'm seeing hands. So this, now we'll go back in for the second time around. I don't know who had their hand up first. So we'll go Counselor Bordelain, and then I think Bum Gardner had his hand up as well.
I mean, I don't think, I think it's not just the numbers. I think we should really, I almost feel like sometimes there's not a cohesive plan in this town. We do these pop-up things and nothing. And I respectfully hear what Mr. Barry states about shoehorning us in. Unfortunately, I was not part of the council when you've been shoehorned around, so I only can speak from the present, and it is unfortunate. So, but I think we need to, like, we got this great developer coming in, and it's like, we've got this Pratt Building, let's have a dream, let's do this. But meanwhile, the castle's crumbling around us at our own community center that we do own, and we're doing nothing. So I think we really need to sit down with this, once this is tackled, and really look at where the heck are we going? What is our plan? What is our goal? What do we want to see in our own buildings that we own? And I think that that, as a council, like, we should really be a part of and know for the direction with the rec department and town staff. And I just kind of feel like, I don't know, just that there really should be a really, like, what is the 10-year projection? And I understand things were in CIPs and weren't voted on, and I can't speak for those if I wasn't there. But the point is, is like, what, I don't know, I just feel like we need some direction. That's all.
I think we could go back and provide that.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, sorry.
I can't. I'm hearing people talking over each other. So, what's your word? I don't know who was speaking. I heard female voices.
I think, was that Mark?
It was, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption. But I did want to share with Counselor Bordelain that we're actually, I'm working with the Public Works Director, and we're compiling a list of money that we've already spent at the community center and money that is projected to be spent. And it was our plan to go to the council and say, is this how you think we ought to be moving forward? These are anticipated expenses, and is this the direction you feel that we should be going? Just to make you aware that we are doing that, and we will be coming to the council at some point in the next couple of months with that information, looking exactly for, or hopefully, being able to provide, you'll be able to provide us with, you know, some of the answers to the questions that you just raised about, you know, we don't really have a plan, and we need to establish one.
Yeah, I can respect that. I think that would be very helpful, and I wish we had that planned before. I mean, I feel like we're planning for, like I said, a building we're going to be renting, and we have buildings in our own town that we need to be focused on. So, thank you for that.
Okay, and was there another hand? Counselor Bum Gardner?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that I think Clerk McCauser was trying to get our attention for some time. Not sure, I know she-
She was letting me know that Mr. Waller has his hand up, but I want to give council the chance to speak, as this is council time now. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so we have consensus, and we've asked for more information on this. So I'm not sure what kind of timeframe we're looking at here. I don't pretend to know how much time this will take for parks and planning and the town manager to come up with these numbers for us. But know that this will be back before us again. And I would urge the council, if you have any further comments or concerns, to please put them in writing to the manager, and then he can incorporate them into whatever comes back before us. Okay? So, Counselor Aubrey, yes?
I was just wondering, did you receive the document that Mr. Zepary was putting together? Did you put that in, Joe?
Yes, I did, but I don't think it's appropriate for tonight.
Oh, no, it's not. I'm not, I agree. I just wanted to make sure that everybody-
And you were copy also.
Yes, I did. I got the copy. I just wanted to make sure everybody had seen it, so we could do something with it relatively soon.
All right, if we are all set on this agenda item, Mr. Burt, is there anything else staff wanted to bring forward on this particular item? Because I've had a request for a five-minute recess.
No, I think that's it.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank Mr. Barry, Mr. Reiner, and the people from Green Play and Perry for coming out tonight and for presenting your work to us. It's been enlightening, and we do appreciate all your work. And thank you so much for hanging out at one of our meetings.
Thank you for having us. You all have a good night, and we'll look forward to hearing from you soon. Take care.
Thank you so much. So it is 9:41. We will break until 9:46. Okay, so we're going to recess at 9:41. We will be back at 9:46. session at 9:46 we are back from recess thank you and we are on to item 2020 8952 Community Development Block Grant COVID Funding this begins on page 71 in your packet and I believe this is Council He please
right uh resolution to approve a Community Development Block Grant COVID Funding award to the town in the amount of 150,000 for the purpose of creating a personal protection equipment PPE stockpile to assist the community at large in the event of future pandemic equipment challenges and to authorize the town manager to accept such funding by executing the state grant agreement and all other approval approvals as might be required in association with this award whereas the Federal Cares Act provided additional small cities Community Development Block Grant CDBG ones to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HED for distribution to states to be used to fund projects that prevent prepare for and respond to the novel coronavirus known as COVID-19 and whereas the town explored an opportunity to pursue state CDBG COVID funding to build a stockpile of personal protective equipment PPE given the demand for such supplies in 2020 and whereas the state of Connecticut Department of Housing DOH has awarded municipalities federal funding through the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program to address the COVID-19 pandemic including Groton is an awardee of such funds and whereas uh Groton's grant opportunity will be used to stockpile critical PPE supplies and develop a distribution grant sorry a distribution program for Groton's entire population is needed primarily functioning as a backstop to community operations and whereas the town council supports efforts to reduce COVID impacts upon the community including acceptance of financial resources such as this targeted 150,000 CDBG COVID grant funding is offered by the state to assist with community needs now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager to accept and execute this grant agreement with the state of Connecticut Department of Housing to accept the 150,000 CDBG COVID funding and authorizes the town manager to complete all executive actions or approvals necessary to expedite and implement this program on behalf of the town of Groton I so move
second moved by He and seconded by Baumgartner and this is the item that we just discussed earlier this evening so hopefully um everyone has had their questions answered in committee of the whole Council Boardel on
yes I I think it should be noted in there that also will report back to council as to like where you know how that fund is doing and what it's being you know how what things are we finding that it's being dispersed for I mean it's one thing to execute it but I think like sometimes we get lost without the updates so it'd be nice to have that in there so that it's uh we're kind of kept in the loop on it
this is John I agree and when you know Paige will be giving regular updates to the resilience committee every month and we can pass that on to the council too
right I I guess what I'm saying is I've seen other resolutions and I don't see it as often in this town but it the wording could state as such that you know councils will counsel counsel count whoever the council is will be getting updates regularly as to for example as Council Franco stated if the PPE year is not needed maybe um some people in low-income housing um you know since it's coming from the housing authority and urban there might be some other needs for people that are in financial you know stress that this money could be used for and so I just think it's important that we are all discussing this uh this topic and this issue uh and kind of getting the updates on where it's at and where we are as a town with that so I I just like I think that should be added in there so can I amend what's on there and just add that one line
yes can you read your amendment please
it can fit however I mean I guess I'll take direction I'm not a from John what would you what would be appropriate do you think I'm just thinking like this funding and moving forward like I think it's important for no matter who's on the council I think all these types of motions should always have those types of thing that it's brought before the public and the council and
can you can you please specify what you're looking for from the manager
I just said it three times would you like me to say it again
we need it to be in the form of a motion if you wish to amend this
I just said you can stay like that and you can just add the one line and brought back to the council
Madam Clerk did you get the language to amend this
what I took from what Council Boardel on said was that she'd just like to add a line that says that that uh there will be a report back to the town council of the expenditures
or status of the of the of the grant like you know what we've what we've purchased where how much we have like it's one thing to have it but there's one thing to actually kind of keep us in the loop on it
so could you please state what you want the amendment to say so that the clerk can get it in writing
you said it just beautifully actually
but you just you you told her you added things to it so please explicitly say what you want it to contain
it could simply state that um the county the the town staff will well because the the motion states that the town manager will execute and do all matters related to it so town manager town staff will um give frequent updates um in regards to the 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 supplies and and the needs in purchases I don't know however what what do you think would be great John I don't I mean I it doesn't have to be like exactly my words just some way that it were brought back in the loop on it
well if you're making the amendment it does need to be your words
so just that the council is updated fine
Madam Clerk are you fine with the language could you read back the amendment that you wrote down please
what I what I wrote down is that the the town manager will further report updates to the town council supply and the status of of the grant
perfect
is that acceptable Council Boardel on
it sounds great to me
is there a second
second
amendment by Boardel on seconded by Obrey and Madam Clerk I'm sorry could you just read it one more time before we do anything else on this that way the whole council's clear
right further's further resolve the town manager will report updates to the town council of the supply and status of the grant excuse me the supplies purchased and the and the status of the grant
thank you is there discussion see no discussion we will vote um Madam Clerk on the entire ordinance or the amendment and then the ordinance
the amendment you vote on the amendment and that that passes then you vote on the whole thing if it fails you still vote on the full thing
thank you so I'm calling for a vote on the ordinance as put forth by Councilors Boardel on and seconded by Obrey which adds the line stating the manager will give uh will report back updates to the council as as read by the clerk all those in favor please say aye
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 any opposed any abstentions so moved unanimously so the amendment passes so now we're gonna vote on the resolution as amended all those in favor please say aye
aye
any opposed any abstentions so moved unanimously okay thank you um so that takes us to other business which is the open agenda item review this is on page 72 and there was um let's see Council Melendez well well let's let the manager add anything he wants first and then I'll throw it to Council Melendez if he wanted to um talk about his item that he had asked about Mr Burt did you want to address anything on the open agenda items I'll take that as a no okay um Council Melendez did you want to talk about your item that came out of your committee sir
um I we had we had done some I I basically just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing a step on my part that I had something to do that I didn't know um but if I could give you guys just a general overview we came to a conclusion that um for people who had served on boards and commissions for a specific amount of time we we didn't come to a definitive um conclusion on the time but uh it was we floated around ideas like two terms so about six years um that when they left the board we would or commission we would um award them with a plaque you know just thanking them for their time that they volunteered um to the town and um uh so you know that that's all that's all we we had really discussed and we were in favor of it in our in our body so um we wanted to just send it over to uh the cow as a whole and get input from from everyone
thank you so we have um I'm not sure what the pleasure of the council is this part scheduling
can I say something before you do that okay it's supposed to be on the list it's my bad I think I accidentally struck it there was a couple times we were gonna take it up but it got bumped for other items so I'm just putting it back on the list and then we'll try to work it in as soon as possible
okay so is is the council as you all can see the list of open agenda items here um is there any objection to trying to get this particular item added on to the agenda sooner rather than later I know a lot of you have been you know holding off on your things because we've had so much going on that needed immediate attention so we appreciate that but all right I see no objection so that's great okay so Mr Burt um we're gonna work that in at a sooner rather than later date and that is it for um other business on the council agenda this evening so I will entertain a motion to
no I have other business
you have other business
why do we rush through items now like before asking does anyone have any other business or does anyone have
excuse me Council Franco
I have other business um with tonight's meeting it seems as though there's confusion regarding the rule for three minutes as to how long a counselor can speak um the the question is is it who when this the counselor is speaking and asking questions and then pauses to listen to a response is the response time um included and uh who is actually keeping the time and is there a stopwatch involved or is it just looking at the clock at a certain time looks like maybe it's been three minutes I mean because and I have gone to I have attended a town council meeting up in Norwich which they do have limits on their time that they speak but it's not by um there is something that they keep track of I mean it's timed it's like electronic and it and even when um residents come to speak at citizens petition it goes it has a ding to let you know your time is almost up and then it will actually shut the mic down when it's time because you don't get any more time but when it comes to us as counselors I I can't just rely on somebody say well you were there for nine minutes and somebody was speak spoke for maybe around four and somebody spoke for three and that's not really a good way to keep track of how long I can ask a question and then when I ask a question and I'm cut off right then and there by a point of order in the midst of my question like and I'm not like just you know pontificating I'm like literally asking questions and the person's not even allowed to answer or almost because they're saying my time is up um I think this is an issue and I think maybe the rules committee should come back with some more clarifying guidelines to this because I know it's new to actually hold us all accountable to three minutes but there should be actual guidelines instead of just sort of like this is how we're doing it and um I can send a a referral over to the rules committee by email and as I had read the the rules I don't need actual ref anybody else to support my referral I can just send it over to them um so I think I'm gonna have to do that because it it didn't go well tonight the way it was sort of happening so I think we should have better rules and clarifying it thank you
I'm gonna respond at this point because I I track um time and I use my clock on my computer to track the time and I note when the speaker begins And I note when the speaker begins. And as I tried to explain when the point of order was called, when the respondents were speaking, I noted that time. You were not penalized, if you will, for the time when people were answering your questions. That time was exerted from your time. So your time was separate and it was tracked separately from when people were responding to your questions. Okay?
Just like to clarify that when you say 10:02, because you looked at the clock on your computer, it could be 10:02 in 50 seconds.
Right, and I, I started, I, I give, you had a chance to go at me. Now let me respond, please, thank you.
I did not go in.
I give point of order.
I'm asking something to go to-
You're out of order. You're out of order.
No? Your comments are-
You're out of order.
You are point of order for your, your-
You are out of order. You ask questions and you want an answer? You need to let me answer your questions.
I did not ask for an answer from you. I asked to send this referral to the rules committee.
And I'm responding to your accusations that you made, which is my right to do.
I would also point out that-
Excuse me, I would like to finish, please, thank you. When I time, I'm, I'm aware that it might be 10:01 and 30 seconds. And I am not that stringent when it comes to that. I give more than ample time for your three minutes. I don't like the accusation that I'm not being fair. When I'm sitting here manically writing down the amounts of time when people are speaking, I noticed this evening someone is running a timer because I could hear it dinging at three minutes exactly. And I let people go beyond the three minutes, if you notice that. So I don't like the accusations that I'm not being fair on this. And you are more than welcome to send your referrals. But I am also entitled to defend my actions. Counselors Zeperry, did you wish to speak?
Well, the only thing I'd like to point out is that we, within the rules, we came, we came by with a second round of questions. And Counselor Franco was invited to continue her discussion or to add to what she wanted to, and she declined. So she really didn't have much more to say. But it was time to move along. We, the meetings have dragged out interminably. That particular discussion, it was quite clear from the beginning that most of the, the counselors felt that we should be preserving the theater in the Pratt Building. And we were also quite clear that we didn't have enough information to press ahead. But yet we'd kind of dragged that thing out for a long time. The rule of three minutes is to prevent the unreasonable dragging out, it's to prevent any one counselor from monopolizing the time that everyone else is entitled to use also. So I, I don't think there was anything that was bad done for Counselor Franco. I think it was appropriate. And I think we should all be held to the three-minute limit.
Counsel Boardman, you have your hand up. Did you wish to speak?
Yeah, well, I mean, quite frankly, I feel certain people are still, even though this rule change has occurred, at the very beginning, I had my hand up at the beginning of the meeting and then other counselors spoke right away and, and then they're not told to, you know, it just seems it depends on who it is. And that's how I feel. And I think sometimes it's the wording, like the words like, "Don't come at me." Like she was just standing her ground stating a point just like anybody else, but sometimes it's the inflection, the words that are used. But other people can speak at a turn whenever they want and it's just okay. So a more respectful way of good decorum would be in other meetings that I've been in, if we're going to hold the line on a meeting where we just changed the rules, then you would say, just like you would to a public comment, you've reached about two minutes, you have about one minute to go. Respectfully to your counselors, not, "Oh, you're all done." That, that doesn't, that doesn't, you know, so, so I'm a talker, so I apologize. I talk. So then treat me with respect. Don't cut me off like I'm some trash. You know, you could, you could give me a fair warning because, maybe because I'm more passionate.
Point of order.
Right to say it.
Counsel Melendez, what is your point of order?
We are supposed to be discussing other business.
I'm speaking about the rules.
The rules is not other business. You state what your other business is.
You spoke about the rules, Melendez.
The rules are not on the agenda. You state your other business and when it's on the agenda, then we can speak about it.
So how come now it's a problem and it was not okay before for anyone to speak about?
Your point is taken. Counsel O'Bree, did you also have a point of order?
Well, no, not a point, if I might say something, I, I think, look, it's new. We've all got to get used to it. I think that the mayor is doing an outstanding job of trying to come to a comfort level for something herself. And I think we all need to be a little bit more gracious. I beg your pardon?
I agree with you. I thank you, yes.
Please don't interrupt. Finish, please. Let, let each other speak.
I agree.
I just think if we could all be a little bit more gracious, I think that Patrice is doing an outstanding job of trying to keep the time. And let's not be petty about it. You know, we'll get used to it. I'm more than happy, you, you send me an email. We need to meet anyways, Counsel Franco, because I haven't taken care of your last request, so we need to take care of that. And, and we will. And if anybody has suggestions on what they'd like to add to the rules, let me know. But for this interim, while we're getting used to it, let's just be nice. Rachel?
I didn't think I was unpleasant.
Kidney.
All right, enough, please. Let's, let's be respectful of each other. We are at the point of the meeting where I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Zeperry, is there a second?
Heath.
Seconded by Heath. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, we are adjourned at 10:08. For those of you who stayed with us, thank you for listening. Be safe, wear your masks and be well.